All right, well, it's five minutes, four minutes, five minutes after seven. And we pulled the select board meeting together here. Sorry for the slight delay. At the moment, we have three recording devices. And?
Video.
A video. So everybody should be like, yes, be like Rex trailer. All right. Oh, what did I have here? So actually, we're gonna start the meeting by joining the finance group, right? I mean, we're gonna, we wanna talk about this special town meeting war. So ask away.
Ah, here we go. Let's go to it. The first item, the first article has to do $5,000 from free cash to legal expense. I take it that's a function of our normal legal expenses having gone beyond, well, not quite yet beyond budget, but you're very close to it. We're trying to look at the balance of the year. And the estimate is, what, $5,000 more will get us there?
Well, I'm not really sure. I mean, it depends on the things that come up. But what we do know is the bills that we haven't paid yet would have us overdrawn on this account by $1,000 to start with. And that's, that does not include February's bill that we're gonna be getting here in March. So we've got, you know, we've really got February, March, April, May, June left. So there's five months left in there. The, I think the thing to remember is that town council is used all through town. I mean, when we have, when we have special town meetings, we'd like to have town council review the warrant, that's a good use. Obviously, there'll be more time spent on annual town meeting warrant.
Yep.
That, since that'll be a much larger document and probably some more issues. The assessors, the assessors have used town council with some issues that they got going on with the appellate tax board. And the tax collector will be using town council fairly extensively if she decides to move forward with some of these tax tapings or, you know, sales and collections for back taxes. So there are plenty of uses for, for town council.
Is $5,000 enough? How did they come up with $5,000?
I, I think I came up with $5,000 just because I wanted to replenish what we originally had in, for, for what we needed to use this year. Yeah, I did give an accounting and I, it's probably in my notes and I haven't settled in enough to find them, but the number that sticks in my head, and I'm fairly good with numbers, I believe if you took a breakdown of what we've done, there's been about 3,400, right in that neighborhood, of invoices from, that have had to do, and I've got that note here, I really do, roughly $3,400 that was used on these open meeting law violations and, and even on some of the material where we're doing the information requests to go over what can be included and what can't be included. And I believe I showed that to, maybe I only shared it with Ted, but there was one invoice from Compliment and Page on that business that was nearly $600. $577 is the number that sticks in my mind.
And what I have is a listing from Mary showing a variety of things from McNichols and Tooms, listings, slip listings through, basically, December of this past year. And that came to about $5,000 all of a sudden. And these are very much the kind of small routine items and so on, a number of open meeting law issues in here, of course. But I suppose the thing to talk about is really not only this one, I understand why we want to kind of replenish this to make sure we don't have money to pay bills through the year. But then if we go on to the Article Two, this is $7,000 in addition, as I understand it, from free cash to a special legal account? Now, what makes it special?
Let me supplement before we answer. Let me supplement your question by just noting that if you take the two articles together, you're really getting two things. You're doing, you're furnishing supplementary appropriations and you're also dividing an account with two accounts. And the question I want to tag on to Ted's is, who devised the strategy? What is the strategy and why?
I would say that I devised the strategy. If somebody takes the blame for it, I'm all set.
And that means you can explain the strategy, yes?
Well, the strategies, and I'm not sure that $7,000 is the correct number, but there had to be a number. And certainly, a year ago, when we were going through the budget process, it certainly was not in any of our minds when I was sitting on that side, that so much of this would be spent on things outside of what we would normally call legal expenses, you know, the normal day-to-day business of the town that you ask for town council. Not so much of it being spent on requests for information and which, you know, people have a right to, but these open meeting law violations are just gobbling up money. And a lot of times you say, well, it's $100 here, it's $150 there. Oh, there's one for $600 and before you know it, there's about $3,500 that's disappeared.
But will this be a division just for this fiscal year, not for the other year?
I think that has to go into our general budget discussion for 2014. I mean, I have, I have no idea if this is gonna miraculously stop or if it's gonna persist for an extended period of time. No, no idea. And maybe somebody else would have, I mean, I feel like I'm doing all the talking here, but...
So what bills would be charged against what account, to what account?
I beg pardon?
How, you have a legal bill in. Am I understanding this, that if it pertains to open meeting law violations, et cetera, it's charged to the existing account? If it's other account, this is, it would be charged to the existing account?
Let me jump in real quickly if I can. Even though it says legal expense, special legal expense, I think it was a vision of this board that as clerk and executive administrator, we're spending time on these because we hadn't budgeted time for them, that they would charge to this account. Well, that, that has to do with Article Three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, we're looking at Article Two, which is splitting up that legal account.
Oh, my apologies.
And I think if you look at, you've got a list of the bills, but they're fairly well itemized. I mean, she, I was very pleased to see that they had it itemized so much on, you know, what did we talk about and who are we talking to?
Well, the question I had, and I don't know if we can do it after the fact, to me, $7,000 seemed high unless we were going to go back and from July forward, take all those legal charges that we think pertain to either open meeting law or where documents were sent out to ask, I think they were public records, checking the town council if they needed to be redacted, probably something like that as well as have otherwise meeting minutes and some other things you don't need town council for. If we were gonna charge all those back to the second account, let's say it's $3,500 just for bad money, then that's gonna free up $3,500 in your main expense account. So it seems one way or the other, the combination of the two at $12,000 seems a little high to me, 'cause I can't figure out how we'll use up the $7,000 unless we were to put all those charges against that account.
Well, these are also amounts that were saying up to this amount of money, and if it doesn't get spent, it hasn't been wasted. I mean, it goes back into the general fund. So in some sense, what we're trying to provide here is an adequacy to get through this year to handle what seems to be an upsurge in legal expenses. The bulk of the increase, I take it, is associated with open meeting law issues. And I don't think there's any way we can sidestep these things. I mean, we can't simply say, no, I'm sorry, that's not the budget, we're not gonna pay for it, because I think we're obligated to respond to the open meeting law kinds of requests. The one thing I have in my mind is, and again, I don't know if this pertains to this particular set of categories, but I'm hearing that we've got McNichols and Tooms, McNichols and Tooms are town council, and then we've been using Compliment and Page as well? Do we need to use both firms on one basis? Where's that coming?
Not simultaneously. I know we used Compliment and Page, I think one member's, that there was an occasion where taking it to Donna, who had written the contract for FERCOG, you didn't ask her to review it for the town of Asheville, so that went to Compliment and Page. I think there was an open meeting law, maybe Donna was out of town, I can't remember, but they did one. Mary may have asked them for advice on another one.
No, I think they's run it out after that issue, but I think there was one, that we got something from Donna, and then, I think it might have been you pull up, however my memory, said that you'd like to have another firm's opinion and asked if it could also go to Compliment and Page. I think we did have one of the meeting law.
That we sought a second opinion, that could be. And then there was one, I know, where you asked them for some help, a second opinion. So we had a couple of times we used them where it seemed realistic as a second, not intended to be simultaneous or nothing in the effort.
We're looking to use it for open meeting law violations and second opinions?
Well, it's because...
I mean, what are the categories they're gonna put in this?
Yeah, when we get those violations, it has become practice to send them to Donna to review them and tell us how to respond. That's what they're coming from. And I think the other part would have been public record documents where if someone questioned, did it need to be redacted? Now, not every public record request needs to go that route, and I think there were times where it seemed prudent to ask for some guidance.
And if my memory serves me, there were two contracts where she was representing the other party, so, and drafted the contract. So that's a potential conflict of interest, and so we went out on intention. Well, I found my note. So it was, it was, it was, my calculations on that list were $3,490, McNichols and Tooms, and then I...
$3,490, what does that number mean?
Those had to do with open meeting law and information request.
Okay.
Plus, that Compliment and Page invoice, which I happen to have a copy of here, which was $577.50. And, you know, it was telephone conference with the chairman, open meeting law complaint, you know, went and reviewed it with the attorney general's procedures for responding to open meeting law complaints, did some research, reviewed backup documents, you know, it was the whole deal. Drafted a response to open meeting law complaint filed with Board of Selectmen by Ms. Corbett, draft correspond, I can give you a copy of this. I mean, it's pretty detailed what it was, and, you know, if you start having to do a bunch of research, I understand that, but, but the big deal is what it is, and it's been expended. But I really think there's five more, five more months in this fiscal year that we need to cover and we're already overdrawn in this account.
And if I may just say, just because something has been responded to doesn't mean that it may not have to be responded to again. So even if there wasn't potential for more coming in, there's still many out there that get revisited or brought back and need additional work.
To David's point earlier, though, it might be well for us, I guess the magnitudes of the money are a little disturbing in a sense that we're kind of, you know, we can hemorrhage cash for a long time based upon all the kinds of requests we're getting here. And if that doesn't end at some point, we're gonna continue to spend ways that are gonna crowd out other expenditures in our budget. But it strikes me that by statute, you're wise to respond to these and in a variety of cases, get legal opinions. But I think it is also important, if we're gonna set up something called special legal expense, we somehow establish what the criteria are for that. We ought to say, and we go backward, which is what I was suggesting, we take and categorize anything with open meeting law violations or information requests, that's, and second opinions, let's say, and I don't know what the list would be, but the small list of things that qualify for special legal expense, so that at special town meeting tomorrow night, we can explain, I think, to the audience, the citizens, what it is we mean by special legal expense. It's not just a slush fund, it's kind of got some specificity to it that I think is important to kind of describe. Does that seem reasonable?
Most of it's really, I mean, special in some ways unless somebody's got something else. This all deals with responses to and from, if you will, the attorney general. Now, public records comes under the attorney general, open meeting law comes under the attorney general, so we're kind of isolating those pieces from the normal day-to-day, like reviewing special town boards, and there's other things that sometimes you have to wait for and call about.
There've been, there was 93A, so that has involved legal work. There was, our town council had to consult with another council on an issue related to one of the open meeting law violations, but it was separate from the attorney general piece of it. So there are bits and pieces.
I, I guess I'll throw the question out. We got the six of us who are elected, we're supposed to be some of the great brains in the town.
Don't go there.
What would be, what would be a better title for this, for what we're explaining we'd like to do with them?
No, I'm saying special legal expense seems a perfectly fitting title, provided we can then, when somebody says, what qualifies for special legal expense, say, they are the expenses that we would consider having to do with open meeting law, information requests, et cetera, and things involving the attorney general.
And then somebody might come up with, though, and say, why can't we just put that in regular legal expenses?
Is this document gonna be distributed to the BOMAs tomorrow?
Not the special one.
No, this is just internal, the talking points, by the way.
What does the bullet that says original appropriation, Article One, original appropriation, $5,000 for FY13 legal expenses need?
And I can clarify that, except I know Tom is making the talking points, but there was, actually, the original appropriation was $15,000, but we knew that 10 of that would be the third deductible for the three lawsuits. So what that means is the amount that we had put to this year's legal work, that we had anticipated would be for this year's town council was $5,000.
I think, I think what's special about it is that we're spending money on things we never dreamed to spend this money on a year ago. That, that's what's, what's special. I mean, it caught me out of the book, that this would turn, that this would turn into such a huge financial...
The first year is probably gonna be kind of a surprise, because all of a sudden, people are just trying to change their ways. I do understand that. But if the original appropriation was $5,000, so we had $15,000 in legal expenses for Article One, right? We spent 10.
But we knew that 10 was...
So immediately we paid out to DIA as a deductible on lawsuits.
Right. So we appropriated 15 at annual town meeting, knowing that 10 of that was our deductible. So it left us a usable budget of five. We've totally expended that, probably half, close to $1,000 worth of invoices that we haven't paid, and we still got five months left in the year.
Now, if, if non-exceptional legal expense was budgeted at about five, and we are, we have three months plus, plus the unpaid bills, three and a half months ago, why would you need another $5,000 for normal, non-exceptional legal expense? What the heck, what do you envision? What do you see that I don't see?
And may I just say, I think the part, it's because there are so many out there now which keep coming back, have a, they don't...
But that's what Article Two is addressing, I assume. I'm not, the amount set for Article One is excessive, I think it might be.
Well...
If I understand your definition.
It may, it may or may not be. But, but going through that list that Ted has, you know, the assessors still have issues that they need to use town council on for the appellate tax board. I've had discussions with the tax collector. The tax collector is gonna proceed on some, some tax taking and that sort of thing. And that's gonna require beyond what it costs to do that, to do that, there's additional legal expense associated with that. Plus, we are still gonna want town council to review town meeting warrants, including the annual. I think, I think historically, you know, that, that's a fairly good invoice right there. And certainly, we're gonna have enough issues on, I believe, you know, just by the link and probably by the time we get done, the complexity of this special town meeting, I got an idea that, you know, that'll be a certain amount of money. Is it, is it $500 too much? Is it $1,500 too much? My crystal ball isn't sure.
What if Article Two was only $5,000 instead of $7?
It would be $2,000 less.
Exactly. But it looks entirely different.
And also, you changed Article Two to, I mean, the special legal expense, are you gonna, if you wanna take, use, do you, can you only use that money for a special legal expense fund for, what'd you put this, obtain second opinions, open meeting violations and reviewing information? Is that limited too much, or do you wanna just put this all into legal expenses?
But I don't think all, I don't think all second opinions belong there. Only if you're getting, you know, if you're trying to make it the AG open meeting law stuff, if you're getting a second opinion about that, but if you're getting a second opinion about something else for town business, it shouldn't go to special legal expenses.
I think the intention was to create an account that we could monitor associated with the problem that we're facing with requests for information and open meeting law complaints. And it would be nice to be able to identify that, whereas if you have it all going to legal expenses, you lose the identity of it. So that was the, I thought that was the intention, to try to... It's the same, it's the same going through and trying to sort it out on that list with Ted's, though.
You might be limiting yourself, though.
And I think it identifies to the town where you're spending the money, that this issue has come up repeatedly, and it's costing a lot of money that we didn't plan on. I think that's, I think that's the, the part for me, is that it's something that...
Be one of your speaking points, I think that's a real good idea.
Yeah, I don't think I'll have, yeah.
Not that there's a budget for it, but if we were at a different kind of business, you might have another line that says education, and we would be trying to get everybody up to snuff on what the open meeting law is and what we have to do and what it looks like, so you don't incur those conditions, that people have a right to say, no, no, that's not right, you're not supposed to do that according to national law.
I think that the discussion of it would be a real good idea for you to say, this is what we're gonna categorize special legal expenses.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
And, you know, is it too big a number?
Well, the question is, if you went back into the $5,000 of legal expenses we've spent so far and took out open meeting law violation type issues, mutual type things, brought them forward into special legal expense, you'd suddenly require a lot less perhaps than $5,000 to get through the balance of the year, run-of-the-mill legal stuff. The problem, of course, is you, we don't know those magnitudes at this point. So in some sense, I think we're almost stuck with this idea of having to overbudget a bit, say, $5,000 regular, to ensure we get through with regular stuff. The $7,000 is gonna be basically a basket into which you put past expenses with OML, open meeting law type stuff, and ongoing stuff, that apparently is not yet...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if, I think Paulette, your point about going back and doing the bookkeeping, changing a back book, has, would have some merit, except I think at this point, once it's all done, it costs you more to have the accountant go back and do all that, and it's a little bit of playing with mirrors. And if I was, if it was my own business and I wanted to reflect, you know, make that account and reflect afterwards, but I don't think there's any reason to go back and try to doctor up the books that have already been, you know, that's business that's gone over the dam. Well, I'd rather look forward than look backwards.
I'll just make one last closing comment on this, and I suppose we could move on, but certainly after looking at this, I look at the initial FY14 proposed appropriation for legal expense at $7,000, I wonder if that's where you listed.
I think too low?
Too low.
But if they have special legal expenses...
Next to...
Oh, next to.
If they have this other account for special legal expenses, would that be enough? If they just limited, I mean, took that other stuff, would that be sufficient?
You know, part of the open meeting law violations is you do something. There's an education process here. The real issue is whatever it was, we learn from whatever group or board that it is, conceivably, you're not gonna do it again. So you shouldn't be incur, if we do, then we're making it happen. If we keep doing the same thing to get that kind of open meeting law complaint, you don't do it.
Well, okay, so...
Well, I, you know, I think that, that would be a good point. But that doesn't limit someone to, to make an accusation or a complaint that doesn't really have any grounds or, you know, I guess what gets me is in a small community that we have to go to this length to spend this amount of money. You know, a community of less than 1,800 people, less than 1,200 registered voters, and, and we can't just discuss it without feel like we're under the gun.
Well, in some ways, we should look at, we don't have to send everyone going to town council to answer an AG, an open meeting law complaint. Sometimes the attorney general's only looking for us to go and identify, okay, according to law, we didn't do it right, we know what to do right, we made a fix in open meeting and we report we did that, and it's done. You know, so you don't have to, I'm just saying, there's that option.
I just, I just think when something is formally done, that for even someone with a, with a pretty rugged constitution, to not call upon town council when it's available may show a lack of wisdom.
And just, if I might just say that in terms of history, this goes back to prior year, too, and initially, when I was in the position, I was writing up sample answers that would come to the board, the board would often disagree about what the answer should be, and I think we evolved at some point to sending it to town council so that it would, there'd be some other party direction.
Certainly, certainly the wrong answer at the wrong time without consulting town council could put you in a worse position than that.
Right, but I think there were a couple of those that had come before this board in particular, that even with town council, we might have wanted, now that we've learned a bit more, to say, you know, nobody's coming in to hit us with a big stick or give us a big fine, they just want us to understand, or they wanna know, we understand how to do something correctly. If we identify that, we don't have to keep the process going and keep arguing about it with the AG, basically, that info, and say, no, we weren't guilty. Some of it is just to say, okay, we understand, we don't even have to plead guilty, just we know how to do it right.
So when you're saying this board in particular, are you saying that it's happened since February 6th, or are you talking prior to?
I'm talking this past year, in year 12.
So the prior one.
So I'm just saying, maybe we wanna look at those in the future and handle, we might choose to handle them a little different now that we're a little more educated about them as well.
I personally don't agree, Paulette. A number of them have come in for remedial action of paying fines and so on and so forth. And I'm very busy with the business head.
And I'm very busy with the business at hand. And to crawl into that legal entity in the past, there've been legal people on the board. And, you know, that's the arena they run in day by day. And I don't run in that arena. And I would be a little cautious about responding for the town on some of these accusations. So I think sending it to the legal council is the best bang for the dollar of the taxpayer. Personally, that's what I feel.
Well, go back to this special legal expense category. I think the only thing that has to be read the answer to is, what do you mean special legal expense? How's that different from regular?
I think Paulette hit upon it and said, open meeting law complaints, requests for public information, and ongoing business with both the AG and the Secretary of State. Secretary of State is responsible for public information. But if it was a public informa, there's overlap too. And it goes on the AG side often, especially if there's a violation on the secretary's side. So it goes in both places. But I think that's primarily what we're talking about out of this account. And maybe the 93A demand notice should have been on the regular business side, you know? And I think this was addressed most of the time.
I think a lot of this segregation is when those invoices come in, 10. I think a lot of the segregation of what goes into what account is very much the same as when invoices come in week by week. You know, somebody makes a decision, do cutting edges count as winter road expense or machinery expense sort of thing? You know, I mean, that's.
And David, you know his point, but could it be all just one? Does it really, we've identified the money, do they need to be separate or do they need to just be sub-accounts in one legal account?
You couldn't call it another $7,000 to legal expense and then keep track of how much is for what purposes and be able to report that out to the town. So the legal expense has gone dramatically because of this category which we kept track of.
We have one article.
I didn't find the fact we made, which should have been one article.
Because then they could do sub-accounts if they tried.
Make it even 10,000 from actual legal.
I would be surprised if the moderator tomorrow night won't let us handle all, discuss all three of these together, even though we'd only be bringing up the first. My feeling on separating them out was that I'm not sure, and I don't think the finance committee really has a good handle on how we want to approach legal expense in 2014. And I think since this is new, this is really new. I think it's okay that it's segregated, at least for this first time, to finish this fiscal year. But you can, certainly, you folks can.
Well, you said three articles?
No, Article 3.
That's special project staffing.
Right. I mean, that has to do with the same issue.
Okay, but it's a whole new sub-account.
That account already exists, if I'm.
Special project staffing, is it?
Yes, it already exists.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that's an existing account. This is Article 3. And this money is to provide funding for the additional staff work needed to respond to the special legal expense.
There again, when we look back at a year ago, special project staffing was to help the select board, you know, with projects that came up and that sort of thing. With all these accusations and complaints and these requests for information that were not set up yet at the push of the button to supply, it takes a lot of staff time. And the staff time that it takes, unfortunately, you know, isn't the staff time that you'd hire a high school kid to do. Because of, from what I understand, legal counsel told us in Greenfield that night, you know, that you have to make sure that there isn't some information, even though it's public record, there's some information you don't want to let out, that you have to have pretty well-qualified staff. So the idea is that the staff that we have with all this extra workload aren't able to do the original job that we were budgeting them to do to begin with. So at some point, there needs to be some supplemental funding in there. Or we're going to fall so far behind on the day-to-day work of the town that at some point, we're just going to say, oh, I guess we'll have to forget all those other issues and try to keep up from today.
So again, can we have some type of categorizing of what special project would be?
Well, I think it's exactly the same as what it was, except we didn't really budget it in into last year. I mean, what did we start out with? I guess we only started out with 1,500.
I guess I want to play devil's advocate and want to make sure this isn't just a fund to supplement staffing that is not being able to get their regular work done for other reasons not because it has to do with.
Yeah, therein, I think we've heard this issue of what's special and what's not. If you call this, associate this with the open meeting law violation type work, then it seems to me we've got to segregate it from what the current legal is, which is special project staffing fund, and somehow further distinguish it. Or I would go back to Article 2, I think, and say, we want an extra 7,000 for free cash for legal expense, that amount being what we project to be involved in a category of legal work, such as open meeting law and so on and so forth. So that we don't start putting lots of accounts here. Because I think the committee could do that. Somebody's going to say, I want special legal expense for assessors. Now, it's special legal account or something else. And I need to get as.
So do you think it needs to be a separate account? Or is your argument right now that you think it should just be thrown into town council?
I think legal expense would do it. And we could certainly track and report.
This kind of report is adequate. And we've got to watch it. I, my greatest concern with this is that it is open to question. Are we going to terminate it or continue it for fiscal reporting? How do we explain this? How do we explain rationale either way? I agree with Ted. I think a single appropriation of the legal expense makes no sense. Also, from an accounting point of view.
That 1,500 originally, that account was set up when we had identified people who were working extra hours, like for voting and not getting paid. So we were looking for an account. And we all talked this through last year, where they could get paid for that kind of time work. It wasn't above and beyond their normal work. There was a couple of different kinds of projects.
And you may also remember, there was, I think it was either last year's budget or the year before in the budget process, the treasurer had put in, I think, an assistant. There was a discussion about, there was, there was some work at different times, whether it was elections with town clerk or certain times of the year with the treasurer, where instead of hiring an assistant or changing the staffing, if there was some money so that at times you could have some extra hours. And I guess, we're going to talk about it going forward, but I, I guess the one thing I would say is time for staff to do the work that's required to do is really, it is an issue.
I mean, the hours.
There was an issue before, which we had discussed in previous years, and then this year.
The hours that we had, but, I mean, I want to clarify what I think I hear you saying, is that the workload for the hours that are allotted in the job descriptions and so forth without all this other.
Were already insufficient.
Or very challenging. Right to the limit. Very challenging. And that's, that's what I thought I was hearing you say. So that, and that would be the reason for this ending. Personally, I think if we went back and actually knew the hours that were spent on all this, this $3,000 is woefully low. You know, I mean, at some, at some point, I mean, it all costs money. Now, is somebody just trying to put it into the right account, you know, perfectly? I mean, that's a noble, and hey, I mean, I worked on this by going over the accounts and trying to come up with what I thought after being here about three weeks. So are these numbers perfect? I don't know. I like the idea of separating it out. I'm not married to it. I'm not married to it. But I do think between Article 1 and Article 2, I think $12,000 is not terribly overstated.
I'm not concerned so much about the magnitudes of the money. In fact, I think they're probably roughly right. And if there's not that much need, all fine and good, respect your general fund. But I think what you, you can't exceed the scope of the Article 1. So it's transfer of 5,000 into that to kind of ensure you've got enough money going forward. And then Article 2, I would argue, should be to transfer an additional 7,000 from free cash to legal expense. The talking point being, we have encountered an increasing number of issues involving attorney generals, secretary of state, open meeting law violations, et cetera, et cetera. This is an additional amount of money we think it's going to be potentially involved this year. And likewise, that's your rationale for Article 3, it seems to me. That we already have an account, which is for special staff funding projects or whatever it is. And this looks like, again, maybe it's inadequate, maybe it's a little bit more than needed, but it's an approximation of what we think is going to be involved in the additional work required to address these kinds of issues.
And another advocate would be, you would minimize the risk of exhausting one of the legal accounts and off the other, and require subsequent special town meeting action to drop it one to the other.
So I think the intent would be sort of, and I think it's a perfectly fine intent to try and make sure we understand how much of this is involved in these kinds of issues. And to Paulette's point, going forward to fiscal year 14, maybe that you could expect some attenuation of this if we're both learning and a lot of this complaint subsides in that that remains to be seen. So I don't, those are, we haven't got working cases officially.
Don't let us stand in the way of you folks deliberating and voting so you can move on. I mean, is that what the finance committee wanted to do, was to, I mean, vote in open meeting?
Vote in open meeting. On Article 1, would you vote to recommend that article as it stands?
As it stands, yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the finance committee would recommend for Article 1 as it stands. Article 2?
Not for suggestion.
I would, my recommendation is that we would recommend that, provided it says an additional 7,000 to legal expense.
Transfer up to, up to 7,000.
I make that as a motion. I move that.
That's, yeah.
Now, is that a? That might be have to be in a motion.
I don't know, a motion. I think we're going to, I think the up to is fine on the warrant, but I think on the floor, you have to be down.
Well, yes. So you could say, so seven, second round of hours.
It can't be a floating.
Well, what you're hearing, I think, from the finance committee is a sense that we would recommend up to 7,000 for legal expense, not special legal expense.
And free cash to legal.
In existing legal account.
So we go, we're putting money into legal account, one article actually.
To be established in a special legal expense.
Have you voted to recommend that yet?
We already come in, vote Article 1, yes. I want to make sure I'm stating this right.
Okay, since we're meeting in tandem.
So you need to.
Would the select, would the select board agree to a motion instead of having to make amendments tomorrow to change from the original motion, that our original, that our motion on the floor would echo the finance base, to put it into legal expense?
I'll move, just to get it on the table, to talk about it. I'd like a motion, but so moved.
Okay, I'll second, so we can discuss.
All right.
But the understanding, it's just going to legal expense. Special is being dropped, so it's all going to stay in one account because we're happy to do the year anyway.
It's all going to only in one account, but we're still going to have opportunity to discuss why they need it.
I guess my question is, in a general sense, if I was on the floor and said, why don't you just mix them, put them together? Just, and talk about the whole thing together? Because it's going to be awfully confusing. And I guess I do have a question. These sub-accounts that I keep hearing about, you don't need a special town meeting, or most sub-accounts, do you? Do you, does anyone know?
If you had a legal expense and a special legal expense, you would have to have some kind of.
The same with legal expense and a sub-account called OML, RFI, request for information. Just for accounting purposes only, it seems to me a good thing to have, personally.
Oh, yes.
So it may be the way to separate these and to give you two unique identities. Because why separate them? Is to say into a sub-account, you know, just to be very transparent with it, called OML and RFI, request for information. I'm concerned that if we put them into one account, it doesn't get the point across what the concern is.
So if you vote them into sub-accounts, then you lose the flexibility you're looking for. It has to stay on the legal, even if in the accounting system, there's two sub-accounts. Can you drag it in? But isn't it, if you vote them on the floor for sub-accounts, I think you lose, that's why we come along with some of those others and make like highway expenses.
So we could do that on our own, is what you're saying. You'd ask treasurer to, or the accountant to.
Just as a point of information, what you said, Ron, and what you said earlier, David, remember, there is the 60-day period at the end of the fiscal year where with a sign-off from both boards, money can be moved between accounts, not even, say, between, you know, between accounts for a certain point, but between accounts.
And there is a $2,000.
But we don't have any accounts that.
No, it's just a point about how we can move money for 60 days at the end of the legal year without special town meetings.
So their proposal.
And we never, we never hit the percentage, or 5% of the account.
So their proposal is just drop special and it's all going to legal.
That's what their recommendation is.
Yeah, we want, what I have written here, make sure we all on the same page, to vote to transfer up to an additional $7,000 from free cash to legal expense. Or at relative thereto.
And then in the discussion to talk about it?
Yes.
This is why.
And if you make that, that's the motion, finance committee would unanimously vote to recommend that. And I think an explanation of why there's an additional 7,000, you go on to explain because of these differences that we need to track that.
And the reason, and the reason that we're putting it in one account is to try to keep the bookkeeping simplified.
But you've got two issues and you're taking two steps. So I think that makes sense to the voters.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? To, that our motion on the floor will mirror the recommendation of the finance committee? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Article 3, based upon the discussion we've had, I think at this point, I'm maybe speaking ahead of my committee, do you have inclination to vote in support of that or recommend it? Test that out.
I'll just make a very quick comment and note that we probably, at least I hopefully will, return to the issue of having a special project staffing fund. I don't object to the appropriation. I do object to setting up the account in that manner. But as it already exists in this year's budget, I'm going to vote to support this appropriation.
As written?
As written.
Oh, please say aye. So we'd recommend for that. So we'd recommend for that. But when we get to fiscal year 2013 budget.
We've got something to say.
And look at that.
Oh, I think it's huge, I think it's huge, and I, and I think, you know, in the budget for tonight and tomorrow, I'm sorry, we're gonna have time for general discussion on how we're gonna handle all these issues.
There are other ways, I think, to accomplish what you were attempting to accomplish here that I think are better, but more later.
Article Four, you already said you would pass over that one?
Yeah, I got a email for hand done, and I'll just read it to one liner or two liner. Hi, Ron, I double-checked my numbers to include the two state elections, and I have enough money in the line item to cover the costs. The FY 2012 budget allowed for all election workers to be paid, however, some volunteered their time, therefore, we will be covered without more funding. We can pass on this article.
Absolutely.
I could support that right now.
I don't even think you'll get a chance to recommend on that one. How do you, how do you get rid of it?
You get rid of it?
You, uh, stand up and make a motion, uh, when the moderator asks, you just say, uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, I move to pass over Article Four. As a matter of fact, you speak to the moderator, he may, he may give you the opportunity to do that. Then there'll be a brief discussion and vote. I would think that, uh, part of the discussion on that, if you said that that was your, uh, when we do that, we want to, uh, really, really recognize and thank the volunteers.
Yep.
Be an easy thing to overlook, though. Okay? Article Five?
I'm recommending that Finance Committee recommends this unanimous, or recommends this article as written.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We recommend?
Now, Del was clear on that, right? The $3,300 and we're gonna get reimbursed 50% of that.
Right. Tree Warden, Article Six?
I move we approve Article Six as, uh, written.
Next second?
I guess so, discuss it. Second.
Any discussion? What do you think about that?
I'd like some clarification on why he thinks we need another $4,000, $1,300.
Yep.
I'll speak to this. I took some time from poison and rode around the streets of Asheville, and I can tell you that just looking at the public ways, townways, and the dead snags and trees above, it'd probably be ten times this amount. In my, I'm, I'm a previous forester in a previous life. He, uh, he's making do with a very, very limited budget. And there was a little bit of discussion, what happens to a tree when it falls in the public way, and under Chapter eighty-seven, there is a responsibility, the tree warden, protect people in the public ways, but, um, it's, there's some efficiencies to be gained by having a tree company come and take care of three or four trees all at once, rather than having to deal with one or two, uh, hazardous situations. Lots of times, a highway crew will just push a tree off the road and deal with it later with, with their machinery, but it's, uh, in my opinion, a minimal amount. It really is.
Is there a chance of any further utility cooperation? Tom alluded to that.
He, we spoke of that also, and he says it's a, it's a two-way street. He, he drives down the street with them, and he says there's no way that they will take care of every tree, narrow wire, um, and there's a certain amount of cooperation that takes place between the utility purveyor and the town. And in his opinion, it's a very fair, um, sort of allocation of that's your tree, that's my tree, so on and so forth.
So how did he come up with that $4,000 type of note?
I'd have to go through my notes, but I think that's two or three days.
I think there are two or three big trees that he knows that are a specific problem.
Two or three days.
Two or three days.
Yes.
Up on some, on some specific trees that he knows are a problem, and I think he's really thinking about one specific neighborhood in there.
Well, we drove up Northern Hill, we drove over Steady Lane, and all the way along, yeah, there's, there's a lot of dead stuff up there, big, big dead stuff.
I think the thing, if you go back historically, you'll see there were years when we were appropriating, uh, seven, eight thousand dollars a year. We haven't been doing that because of trying to fit everything into the box, and, you know, if you don't appropriate the money, the work doesn't get done, and at some point, the, the work is still there.
We really don't have the money either now, as we didn't before.
It's a balance with the liability issue, too.
Yeah.
But we do have unexpended funds in the building inspection line, so there's a basis for pulling it out of there.
Oh, absolutely.
And we appropriated fiscal year 2013, $4,000 for tree warden expenses, and with this $4,500 augmentation, we approved that, it's ninety-five, eighty-five hundred, so he's probably gonna come back for this fiscal year 2014 asking for what, $9,000?
He gave, he gave us a budget.
He did give you that.
He gave us a budget.
Well, it's.
And I think he left it pretty wide open, you know, he wants twenty or thirty.
Yeah, he wants to have that, of course.
I'd just add that I, I agree with Ron, uh, that I do, and I think that we are doing a good job of, uh, maintaining tree properties in the public ways, and I think moving forward rather than backward is gonna make some sense here. I, I think we should appropriate these forms.
And, and he, he did request just the $4,000 for FY 14, but he did say that he thought that would also be inadequate, but had been asked for a level.
What did he request? Well, he, he was asked to only request level funds, and so, I mean, those are pretty easy numbers to copy.
That's right, but there was another part on there, because wish list was an additional.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All in favor of recommending Article Six? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Article Seven. Police Department would like an additional $6,700, some of it from police vehicle 2012, that was unexpended for cruiser. There's some unexpended money, what, $909 from police department, and then $4,000 from tax title expenses to police department expense. Again, all those different sources have funds available, so that's not the issue. The question is $6,700. The expenditure is in police department expenses, which is about, what, eighty-seven percent expended now, and only about two-thirds of the way through the year. This is for, um, what's been variously described as over-expending or under-budgeting the police department expense category. And, um, um, some investigations, I understand, were at issue, that were more expensive than obviously anticipated, uh, but there were also some events in there that were quite discretionary, I think, that were scheduled and paid for. And I guess, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the basis for the budget to support this.
Yeah, no, um, I have a letter from the chief that he sent to all of us, the Select and Finance Committee, dated March one, 2013, and he went down and itemized things that affect his budget. Certainly, the addition, the Select Board, the additional hours for Fall Festival is something we authorized, that we said we would figure out in the spring. Um, Hurricane Sandy, of course, would add something. The sexual assault investigations, they did bring in an additional officer that the Select Board needed for, so that took something, um, above and beyond. The, it's smaller money in a certain sense. The $400, he mentions that the bill for the alarm monitoring for the entire town hall.
That one is not the case, I thought, uh, mentioned at the last meeting. They're just paying for the police monitoring, we pay for the one up here, he misunderstood that.
Okay, all right. So that's his, his, okay, thank you. Looking for other things that, to me, look exceptionally different.
But that all has to do with this next year's budget. This is appropriation of what he's overspent.
No, this is this year's budget. I'm giving you this year's budget.
Oh, this is the one?
Yes. That he was doing for us, yes. Now, evidently, there was some extra coverage at the school. I'm looking through this list. I mean, I think one item that came up that Ted had mentioned is, he cites extra money for doing, um, first night, and I think we probably weren't expecting that to be that way.
I think that very well illustrates a concern I have, Paulette, where if I am the chief of, of a department and I have a, a budget, and I'm responsible for administering that budget, and if there are certain things that have gone on, whether unexpected investigations, do you take initiative and authorize expense for a homeless of outreach programs, or National Night, or stuff the cruiser, or the other things he has listed here, um, knowing that there is no appropriation for them, is that responsible administration? I, I, I have some questions, I have some concerns about that. Had I known that when I stuffed a gift in the cruiser, that I was being expected to pay for the staffing on that charitable event, I think it's a little questionable. Know what I mean? I assumed, I would have assumed, that that spirit of giving was all encompassing and so forth, but that isn't so much the point. The point is, is that are you doing the right thing as a, as a department head by authorizing expense where you have no appropriation and your budget is already stressed? I, I don't like the kind of precedent at this step. Just you spend ahead and you come back for a special appropriation. So I just want to register that objection with the board.
So I think some of what he put there, I would say is fair, because the Select Board told him, okay. And so what you're citing is some other activities where one would question, why did we do that then? And are we giving clear enough signals when we say we want you out in the community, and they go, oh, in the community, but it's not fitting the budget? I'm just looking at the other side of the coin. I'm not defending it, I'm just saying.
I, I just believe that there should be a conversation that the board has with its chief regarding financial management.
I, uh, I'm measuring my comments just a bit. I, uh, I told you, I, I'm trying to look forward and not in the rearview mirror. I think, my belief of what happened is that the police department came in with a budget last year. What was passed was not really terribly reflective of what was requested, and I think in all the things that are going on and so on, that maybe not a hu, a great amount of continuity on the board certainly might have blended to it, is that, um, it wasn't directed to the police chief in, in that this is the budget you need to work in, you can't just march on with what your original plan was, you have to, you, you have to find a way to manage within this. But I think it's a great opportunity over the next three weeks for the Finance Committee and the Select Board and the police chief to have some really open discussions about how much police the town of Asheville wants and how much they can afford. We need to come to terms with that.
Yes.
At, at our last meeting that we had, uh, with the police chief, I mean, I, one of the issues that we, we just absolutely failed to address is any policy on what we're gonna do about police cruisers. You know, I mean, if, if we are gonna be a two-horse town, how often do we have to get a new horse? Or, or are we gonna say we're only gonna be a one-police cruiser town? Um, and I think we have to decide on, you know, let's take a good look at it. I mean, it is kind of a little foolish that, that, um, on somebody's part, that we had a police department budget and one of the excuses are, one of the reasons, maybe not excuses, not the right word, maybe, one of the reasons, uh, is that we had to do some investigations. You know, our budget's out of the way, we had to do investigations, I mean, we didn't have enough money or we couldn't manage it. Uh, there was a, have you spoken to the chief since Saturday when he sent this email, this last email?
About the $909?
Have you spoken to him?
I, I sent him an email, and my recollection, he was here, we were talking about it, and he reiterated, and he was correct. He said, it should be okay, but it might be tight, because he didn't have that third bill. Now he has the third bill, and it looks a little tight, but at the end of the year, we could address that. It was only.
Amen to that, sister, because when he sent this email, I said, I swear he was sitting right there.
And I wrote to him.
I have, I have these spells, you know, where I start speaking and laughing, and only very few people know what I'm saying, but I didn't think it was that hard.
I did write to him right away, and it's, I, and we agreed, and he just wanted me to know that it could come to the end of the year, whatever we want to do with fuel, but he did tell us it might be.
So, so to get you in the loop, he sent an email this Saturday. It says, I was looking at the warrant for the special town meeting and was rather shocked to see that $909 was being transferred from my fuel line to police department expenses. I just want to let you know that this will leave me with just over $1,800 for the remainder of the year after I pay the most current bill. So, uh, you know, based on usage year-to-date, I'm projecting around a $200 shortfall. My answer to that, and I didn't email it because I knew you were the liaison, was to say, manage it. I mean, that's, I mean, that's three tanks of gas, if you're gonna be 200, you know, manage it.
Exactly.
And, and I, I think those are the discussions. I know we're gonna be discussing it, we've got people waiting to talk to us about the school budget, but I think the police, at some point, the school budget may not be something that we can manage, but the, the police department is something that we can definitely manage. And I think that deserves some time, along with some of these other things, so.
To give the chief his credit, he wrote this letter, he said, I'm trying my best to operate within a limited budget, meet the requests in regard to community policing, and so on and so forth, also try to meet the needs of our residents who are concerned with quality of life issues, et cetera. So, at least ostensibly on paper, there's this, you know, concession of need to kind of balance a number of competing interests, but it is also true, we've got to be clear about the need to manage a budget and not allow past rates of expenditure to kind of persist, if that's gonna lead to a deficit at the end of the year, that's just not on them. So I think that kind of conversation would be most welcome, certainly by the Finance Committee, in connection with the police department.
The other part to add to that, when we had that discussion, is when? Because like he cites, in the summer, people are concerned about the motorcycles on Main Street. Well, maybe there's an offset to that at a different time of the year if you're doing something extra for summer.
That, that's part of being a department head, you know, it's, it's like, Tommy, Tommy's not sending people out to plow and sand in July, so.
Yep.
It, it's that, it's that type of management, but I think our discussion in the future has to do about, you know, this year, this debate about Fall Festival, and all these others, you know, what is, what do we expect to be done, and what are more optional things?
And concerns about things that are considered tax-type, private events or just town events, how we, or what do they handle that?
And I, and I don't think it's up to him to decide. I think it's up to this board to decide those things, not a lot of those, police chief. Not up to the Police Chief.
And for that one, I think that was also... On two of those, we authorized, we told him to go and... So the extra was on us?
I'm not over here wanting to miss.
But one point of clarification. If we take 4,000 from tax titled expenses, does that do any damage to our ability to tax it all?
One of the projects that the tax collector was going to spend that on has been resolved.
I see. So there is indeed money available now then?
There's money there available.
As long as there's the discussion about what happens from here on out. This is crazy.
Would you move to the...
I'd like to approve Article 7 as written.
It's been moved, second? I will second that. Any further discussion on the Finance Committee?
No.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Not moving.
Abstained? Two, zero, one. Finance Committee recommends, two, zero, one. That means we're going to get heat on that tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Can we move on to the appointments? We're, just so everybody knows, we're running a joint open meeting with the Finance Committee tonight. Sorry, we had an eight o'clock appointment with the School Committee, so we'll... Sorry to hold you up, but we have a history of doing that lately.
Very interesting.
So just to reiterate a policy that I've got, that I'm probably going to break tonight, is that we have discussions with people that we have appointments with, but I am aware that there are some parents that have some issues. I'm going to ask that when we discuss this, that it be brief, okay? To get through it, but I want to spend as much time with the School Committee. I want to hear all the good news. That there's peace in the ranks and everything's moving forward, so. Poppy? Sit right up front or whatever you like. Poppy's used to being in the arena.
I haven't officially met with you since we had the public hearing two weeks ago. When we had a meeting after there at the Mohawk Library. I know you're all aware now of what happened last week. That there was a last-minute amendment to the budget that passed the majority of School Committee members who were present. And you've all raised the budget.
And that was an 80,000, just to clarify. And Asheville's assessment on that's an additional 14,000 change.
15 or 16, I think it was. It upped it to 6.2 from 5.0. Yes, our original assessment to the towns was 5.22% above the year before, and this pushes it up to 6.03%. Total operating assessment of $1,896,906, which is a change from FY13, again, this is the operating assessment, not capital, of $107,881.
That does not include the capital?
No. So this is, as we pointed out, $30,000 more than what the town can raise under crop to have. What I will tell you is that our meeting tomorrow night, and I apologize again for not being able to make your town meeting, but we have another meeting at the school. On the agenda is a motion to rescind that vote and then vote to approve the budget as we had originally designed it.
I think there was some question, wasn't there, as to whether or not, when we proposed the amendment, that we were, that we were within our bounds to sort of restrict, to designate where we wished to have that money spent. And so there was a question as to whether or not we could designate that it would go to the high school instruction line. Although we didn't say instruction line, we said $80,000 for, not a specific program, but to be added to the budget after people had spoken in favor of...
Was it actually voted to go into a specific line or a specific...
The motion, the amendment was actually worded to use to reinstate French and peer leadership because we've had a number, and some of you who were at the public meetings saw presentations on French and peer leadership. And I wanted to clarify that number one, peer leadership is not leaving, it's just transitioning to a different form. The other piece is that French is not within the School Committee's purview to say. I'm Chair of Education Subcommittee, we've discussed this at length. We can tell the school how many languages we would like them to have and appropriate, you know, make sure that the budget has enough money to cover it. We can't say which ones. So the motion was made for, to restore French and peer leadership, which is what's been in all the newspapers, and that's totally off on the side. That has nothing to do with this. If the 80,000 stays in the budget and passes all the towns, it is up to the superintendent, the principal, to decide what that's used for. And they've already said there's 100 other things they would rather use that money on than French and peer leadership. You don't want to see the newspapers. There's a lot of issues here, and I'm not sure which one to vote for.
So you're saying, you're saying that the motion that was made isn't as clear as it seems?
Exactly. We do have the authority to increase the budget. While I'm speaking, I just wanted to address really quickly. After that meeting, I was asked point-blank how I could possibly vote no for $80,000 more for our children. And I didn't vote no for more money for our children. I voted no, that it should not come from the towns, that the towns were stressed far enough. And I want to make the point that the original budget that the principals were asked to design back in October, where we asked what would be an adequate budget, was 10 times that much. So pitting town resources against the school is not the answer to our problem. Leave a much bigger picture that we need to work on. And I want to make the case that taking $80,000 from town resources and giving it to the school is taking from our kids. Because if they can't get there because the roads aren't clear or they don't have emergency services, that's not going to help anyone. The other piece I want to point out that disturbed me greatly was the timing. I think, I'm sure all of you, I know, on Finance Committee have felt this, where you work ad nauseam to come with a proposal to the floor of town meeting, and then people just don't even listen to your recommendation, they change everything. I feel that this last-minute change is disrespectful of the process. I feel it was disrespectful to the Budget Subcommittee that's had open meetings and working on this since October every single week. And that's really where I'm at. I think it's disrespectful to the process. So that's why I voted no, not what they said in the paper.
So you do have it on the agenda for tomorrow night?
We have it on the agenda to rescind. We've heard from most towns. The Chair of the School Committee has heard quite a lot of negative feedback from the towns. Kevin Fox from Buckland came and told him that you, in one fell swoop, removed all of the goodwill that we've built up with the towns for the last five years. We destroyed it.
Tom, I'd like to ask you a question, Emily. What made this particular case remarkable, you know, precedent, and at least locally, is that the School Committee with this amendment approved a budget that was greater than the budget it adopted and brought to a public hearing. I don't know if that raises any legal issues or not, I'm not sure. But I, in reading the newspaper tonight, I saw that that question is being looked at. Can you comment any further about that?
I don't have the legal response to that question. I believe that will be addressed at tomorrow night's meeting.
Tomorrow night's meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in light of this, and I think some concern, at least on my part, I shared a draft letter with the Select Board and with the Finance Committee in which it seems to me we might be well advised to take some issue with this process. And I have that draft in front of me. I don't know that I need to read it at this point, it might be appropriate. Essentially, it argues that our town is in the process of digesting what was going to be a 5.2% increase in our operating assessment. And I'll be very candid to say that we recognize that for the last few years, probably three to four years, we have been favored by some decrease in assessments, by small percentages, fractions of a percent, 1%, things like that. And we recognize also that the state formulas, which seem virtually impenetrable in terms of the logic of how they're put together, lead to a lot of variability, seeming inconsistency. One year, one town is up by a couple percent. The next year, one town's down by 12%, and somebody's up by 15% and so on. This was no different a year in the sense that we were going to be assessed for a 5% increase. I think Holly was maybe 12%, 14%, something like that, quite a bit larger, although it was a small dollar amount. But now, to get another $14,000 increase on what we saw to be a $93,000 increase with a 5% reduction, meant that our budget, our operating budget for the schools was going to increase by 6% plus a little bit. And my first estimate was that it crowds up virtually all the other kind of small changes we were trying to make in our own town budget. It doesn't mean we're not trying to support schools. But the way I cited it, I think other towns, other departments in our town have important needs as well. And these dramatic increases at the last minute in particular seem both unbalanced and unsupportable. And to quote one paragraph in this draft, it says, "It seems to us," and again, I'm proposing to represent the Select Board and Finance Committee, but this wording is not inviolative, change at all. "Seems to us that the School Committee, in overriding its own Budget Subcommittee, has sought to avoid difficult trade-off decisions as it seeks to directly intervene in curricular matters by apparently trying to restore the French Peer Leadership offerings. If those particular changes are indeed so vital to the curriculum, shouldn't other curricular areas be considered for reduction or elimination? Asheville, like other member towns of the Mohawk District, has to live within limited financial resources, and we expect the school system to do the same." And my concluding notion was if on top of this 5.2% operating costs we're struggling to accommodate, we're asked to support another $14,500 for an operating increase of 6%, we will not do it. And I was proposing the Select Board and Finance Committee would recommend against approving the school budget, if that's what's going to happen. And I think it's as much being concerned about this last-minute process of jacking up what we were already trying to digest is a pretty substantial increase. So it's not being against the schools, but I think, I'm just concerned that this is, we're getting horsed around here at the last minute in ways that I don't see we can manage. Not with all the other challenges coming forward in our own town budget. So I'm concerned.
When several meetings going to be met, you'll remember that the Finance Committee voted to request, I think you were there, Emily, to have our representatives return to the School Committee and Budget Committee. And not necessarily to reduce the budget, but rather specifically to examine the excess and deficiency accounts of surplus revenues. Having been a school business manager for 15 years, I like the way you explained it, there's a sweet spot. And I don't think we were at that sweet spot in a 5.2 budget. And I believe that a second real hard look of surplus revenues is needed. Now that, and it was needed, in my judgment, at a 5.2 budget. Now that we're over 6, it's very desperately needed. It would seem to me that if the School Committee wanted, or citizens wanted to accomplish more than what was laid out in the programmatic plan of that budget or that increased budget, that the answer, I agree with you, doesn't come from tax, turn to the towns and saying, "Give us more." I think district resources should be utilized for that purpose and not town resources, so.
I did do as you directed and went back and talked with the Business Administrator and Superintendent and the Budget Subcommittee about using more funds. And what that would mean to get us to what the town supposedly can afford, that back down to that $77,000 increase, would be not only losing this additional 80,000 that was voted in last week, but another 80,000 on top of that from the entire school budget. So the consensus seemed to be that that deep of a cut at the school level for all the towns in order to provide $15,000 worth of relief for the town of Asheville just wasn't going to fly if it meant, you know, putting us in an even deeper hole.
We fully realize that, you know, when you're dealing with eight member towns, it's a rising tide and a falling tide, and we can't obviously... But could this town manage better with a 4% assessment increase or 5.2? That would be some, you know, how we're going to work this out, I'm not sure. How we're going to make this all fit without a levy override, I don't know. Boy, this is sure ain't a time to be asking people to pull you up to the bar. I don't know how we're going to make that work. I understand your answer.
That's why they pay us the big bucks, David. Paulette, do you have any opinion or discussion on that?
Yeah, I saw the piece in the paper and all, and forgive me if this seems out of place. But I'm sort of thinking of some of the things Ted has said in the past as we talked about the school. And if, for me, to make it seem like a business, we've got widget makers, which are the teachers, we've got widgets, the students, and then we've got everything else that's not that. And somehow managing all those pieces is obviously what you've been struggling with on the Budget Subcommittee. And I don't know if there are any more pieces in there that can be looked at in terms of the pieces that aren't the widgets or the widget makers, that there's a few dollars to be had there that would help in the area that Dave's talking about, to maybe about $80,000. I have no idea. I mean, you deal with the details, you know whether that's realistic or not. But it seems the only place to look if we don't want to cut services to the students in terms of their teachers.
Yes, and as you know, some of our discussions, our hands are tied in terms of a lot of cost-saving measures. And there are a lot of unfunded mandates by the state. So we start with all the stuff we have to pay for that we don't have a choice with. And then we try to figure out how to divide up what's left. And it's very frustrating. And we've tried to squeeze and we're always trying to come up with new ideas. I've worked in town governments quite a bit, the point where you get to the point where you don't have enough hours to think outside the box, where you just keep doing the same thing you've always been doing, but you try to do it faster and more efficiently because you don't have that extra minute to try to come up with a new solution. So luckily, at the school, we have a lot of really caring people, parents, you know, School Committee, teachers, everybody in the community working together to try to come up with those creative ideas. And that's why we have the open meetings, and we appreciate it when people come and, you know, say, "Hey, I can look at the budget, why don't you think about..." We especially like it when somebody comes up with an idea that we hadn't already discussed fifteen blocks of time. Right now, you know, it's a moving target and things are always changing. Our school population's changing, the needs of the special ed. But where we usually, we run the budget so tight, we usually have like less than a percent difference from what we originally budgeted the last several years. And if we have any savings, it usually comes in at the state level where we have the original budget based on the guestimates that we all have to do from the state. The final budget comes in usually when the next fiscal year's already started, and then we find out that maybe there's a little extra money for this. Or maybe we didn't have as many special eds, didn't show up at the front doors we thought there would. It is fluid, and we try to squeeze as much as we can. It's very difficult.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to take an unpopular, probably different stance on this. First of all, Emily and Poppy, what you're doing is wonderful. Thank you for the time you're putting in. It's a lot of brain power, a lot of frustration, but it's democracy at work. And I can't protect you from democracy in the public. And I believe in the School Committee 100%. And I also believe in jurisdictional lines, where you're elected people. And I'm not supposed to micromanage what you do. And I've had that stance on this board many, many times. And I've had that stance on this board many, many times. So I say to you, good luck in what you're doing. But I put on a different hat also. And if a few people can make a compelling argument to that elected body to change their mind, all the power to them, because they must have come up with a very good idea. Now, I'm not arguing for them or against them, I'm just saying the School Committee approved it. And I really want to stay, I want to go tomorrow, and maybe I'll be able to. My problem, Ted, with the letter, is I, over the past week or two, I've been looking at the school in a different way. My kids are all out of school. But I remember the passion of having my children in that school and standing up on that town floor saying, "I want that extra money in there." And this $14,000 on top of what we already have is miniscule. It's really, every dollar hurts. And fiscally, I'm responsible, but I'm also responsible for the education that comes out of our school system to a certain degree. And so I got on the internet over the past week or so, and I don't know this, like the people in this room know this, this is, I'm really a newbie here. But I got on, I had agreed through No Child Left Behind laws and the state waiver of it, and it's all, all these things being constructed and then reconstructed and so on and so forth. And one of the things that caught my attention, I'm a big public school fan, is something that is called an accountability data. And I'm sitting at the computer and I'm saying, "Oh my God, Nina." Nina's my wife. I said, "What's going on here?" I finally realized some problem. I want, I want to encourage more people in the mar, because I know the issues that we're facing, I want them all coming in. And I looked, it's a very convoluted sight, the Department of Education, and your brain goes crazy trying to play with it. But this accountability data, the one thing I draw to your attention here is the number 27 at the very top, about two inches down. Out of a hundred, it says, it's a performance relative to schools in the same grade, school percentile. So it's out of a, out of a score of 100, we're in the lower 27th percentile. And I look at schools like Four River, three times this amount, still not hitting their targets like they're supposed to. I look at Amherst and then Double. I look at everyone, except for Greenfield, I'll tell you, I was looking for one that was lower. And Greenfield is lower than our accountability. And it concerns me because if I was a parent, now, now I put on this hat as a parent, do I want to move to Ashville? Such a beautiful town. Yeah, they don't have the internet yet, it's coming. What about the schools? I might want to choice out. Who would be choicing it? Greenfield, probably, because Greenfield has a lower score than we did. And I'm very loyal to Mohawk. I went through 7th grade through 12th at Mohawk. And I went to The Hobbit this last weekend, and yes, they finally got a theatrical performance recently, in the last two or three years, that's really hit the mark and it's going to do good things. And they're striving to bring more and more people into the school system. But this $14,000 is not our issue. This $14,000 is a miniscule amount on top of what they really need. This 20, to be in the 27th percentile, they need a lot more money to go a lot further. I don't know where it's going to come from. I really don't know where it's going to come from. But if we don't fix the problem here somehow, there will be more students leaving, and we're going to have much bigger issues. Then I looked at the last three or four years of our, of our school budget, and I kind of did a little bit of a linear regression kind of thing. It hasn't even kept up with the CPI. It really hasn't. What we as a town should have been doing is socking money away for this day. I mean, with the possibility, I didn't know it was going to be a $100,000 increase when I ran for Select Board here, you know? It's crazy that that formula can change so much in a year, but it could change back. And I think that any way that we can find to, to prevent being in this position again would be very advisable, not only meet the requirements of the school budget, but maybe the eventuality of it going up another $100,000. Somehow, we have to have that ability. So I'm not really in favor, Ted, and I really respect what you did here of being co-signing on this letter. I think we're crossing those jurisdictional lines. I think we have elected School Committee people, yes, we have to pay the bill, but let the process and the democracy work at their level. And where it might be rescinded, and it might not be. So that wasn't rehearsed, it was just building my guts, so that's how I feel. That's what's normally best. So, Janet?
Well, I don't really mention that this letter and the work of our committees is also part of the democratic process.
Oh, absolutely. Janet, do you have any comments?
I have a hard time speaking because this number's here, 27 lowest performing, I think that's why people aren't staying in the school. I see Ron's point. I see what it's doing as far as our towns, but I'm also on the Finance Committee side thinking, where the hell are we going to come up with this money? You know? But how do we keep our kids, our families putting their kids in a school if we continue to do it? I think the school, the Mohawk Regional School District is top pair. I don't think the money's going to help our kids.
There's also questionable capacity in the school system. It's about, what do you got? 2,500 students could effectively fit within those buildings and so on. I'm not sure if that's what the School Committee calls instructional capacity. Instructional capacity suggests to me staff, teachers, those kind of people. I'm assuming from what I'm looking at in the statistics that I've seen in the report that it's really more a building capacity issue. But we've got 1,000 students in the whole system, not 2,500 that it could accommodate. And we're losing about 30 students per year. So the demographics are against us. We have a number of school facilities that we are being, in effect, taxed to kind of support and keep going. And so I'm very sympathetic to the idea that more money might be helpful, but I'm not sure it can come from the towns. To set aside another $100,000, as you suggested, just a hyper credit, would suggest that what we do is we start cutting other departments in our town somehow, or take more out of stabilization, which brings us to dangerously low for any kind of eventuality that might affect the town. I just think that what we've got here is a populism, district-wide, not Ashfield alone, but district-wide, that has for a long time sort of fobbed off the problems that we face to the next, you know, couple of years, that we can't come to grips with how we're actually going to get this thing structurally right. And I don't think that we can afford as a town to keep putting more money in the system. And it's more and more difficult to justify if it's a system that's not performing terribly well. You'd like to think that more money's going to pay off and be productive, and I don't know if that's going to be the case or not.
I wanted to add something, Tom, and that is that the complexity of how state aid is equalized, proves your foundation budgets and all of that, means that the state is attempting to equalize educational opportunity and balance things fiscally from town to town. What that all shivers down to is that if you take each town's assessment, each town's share of the school budget, what they must come up with, and deduct their relevant state aid, what are the per-student costs from town to town? And they vary widely, because Ashfield is perceived as having the highest valuation ratios, as being relatively municipally wealthy. I did a very careful analysis of this for fiscal year 12, and of the nine towns, Ashfield was paying the most per student on a 10-12 basis, as I remember, upwards of nearly $13,000 per student, going all the way down to Charlemont, and I don't remember whether that was 6,900 or 7,900 students, but that's a tremendous width. So the burden of public education on Ashfield and the offsetting impact it has on general government is just horrible. It is an unfair burden upon our town.
But how do we change it?
Well, I think, I think that's what we have to, I mean, it's a huge problem. I mean, and it's not a new problem.
No, it's been there.
And everybody else has had a chance. It doesn't happen very often. But on this issue, I find myself with my feet firmly placed in midair. Because, because I really believe that the truth is somewhere in the middle on the whole deal. We have had the last two or three years, when you came in with the original budget, I was the first one, I got to say, you know, "We've had two or three years where we, if we've had any increases at all, we've had some decreases, and the increases have been minimal, you know, we did, you kind of took that in, and we didn't sock money away, you know, because we had other things, and we exactly, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of money to do that with." And we've had a, you know, everybody on the Finance Committee has, you know, made pledges or, you know, said that they've got conflicts with, anybody that doesn't know, my wife teaches in the school district. But I don't, I don't think that's much of a conflict, because I've been 30 years telling her, she's been getting full-time pay for part-time work. But anyway, the...
She's a dear bitch.
And I couldn't do without Grace. She's a trooper for taking it.
She's a dear bitch, you know, on that one.
But I think the truth is on both sides. $80,000, but is it being spent in the right place? I guess that, you know, should it, should it be spent in the high school? Should it be spent in the elementary school? I mean, it really is up to the School Committee to make those decisions, and to take this arbitrary amount of money and set it into just the high school. I'm not real comfortable with that. I'm not saying it's a good program or a bad program, you know? I know sometimes that, and I had no idea if it's that way, but, you know, it's hard sometimes to separate the task we want to do from the person who's doing it on occasion. But, you know, and it could be that $160,000 would be a better number, and maybe a cut in administration by $160,000 would be, you know, a little bonus to make that work too. I don't know that. I, of all the crazy stinking things that I'm going to do, I assure you, I'm not running for school today. To have to digest all of that and make those kinds of decisions. But hey, I share Ron's opinion that, you know, I mean, I had two children, I graduated from Mohawk, I had two children that came through the Mohawk system that got wonderful educations. And, you know, some of these reports and so forth, maybe, you know, when you say only 27%, maybe some of that is beyond the school's control. You know, I mean, that, that, that children, you know, the school can't do 100% of it. So it is tough. And our biggest problem, I see, is we've got all these facilities, and somebody has to make some really hard decisions. And, I mean, hey, every dollar we can spend on education is awesome. Spending it on facilities that we're not using in administration sometimes, I question. But like I said, I'm not on School Committee. As far as making the, Ted, I think your letter is well-written, and certainly those of you that want to sign it, I think the language is just a bit too strong. Because I think in reality, I mean, I've been, you know, I'm not that old, but I've been around a long time, somehow, we're going to make these numbers fit in a box, you know? Something, that box that we've got to fit it into, it's going to come out all right. $14,000 wouldn't necessarily be the end of the world. And with the Mohawk Trail Regional School District, I certainly feel that other towns are going to control where the budget is. I don't get really nervous, I just sit back and I say, you know, the other, some of these other communities are going to sort this out because out of the, there's eight towns in, and six towns have to pass it.
Yeah, but there's only two, I think, that have increased a lot.
My, my history is that, my recollection is that any big discussion on schools in the town of Ashville doesn't really get a whole lot of traction. Somebody will bring a baby and pinch a baby and then they'll pass. They'll cry. So Emily?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, for me, the $80,000, I don't want this to become a precedent where we keep coming to the towns for long, because we need 10 times that. That's the sort of need. Those assessment figures that you passed out, this is not an excuse or an offense, the state redid how they do assessments this year, it's a whole new system, and some of those numbers did catch us by surprise. Sanderson, which is the best school out of all the Mohawk schools, didn't do well in growth, because when you're already at the 93rd percentile, it's hard to push your kids to do better. So that factors into that as well, where we don't have the growth. Education, I keep hearing a lot of people are down on administration. I was one of those people too. I used to, kids in those schools, "What do the principals do really? Why do we have to have one firm as school? What is this with two curriculum coordinators?" Having been on Education Subcommittee and chairing the committee, we're investing in this because through a lot of PD, we've learned how much School Committee and administration really does affect the achievement of the children. We also have something called the Common Core Standards that have been adapted by most of the states, and so we're not teaching the Massachusetts standards anymore. We have to rewrite the curriculum for every single class from the bottom up, and we only have three years to do it. So we've hired two curriculum coordinators to help teach the teachers how to teach to this new curriculum, to the new tests, what we're all going to be assessed on, and to get us up to speed, and that's where the increase in that is. When we do personnel negotiations, we're holding the administration to the same levels that we are with all the teachers and everybody else. We're not, you know, throwing stuff at the wind and saying, "Let the next generation pay for it." We're really trying to contain those costs. But there was a definite need this year, partly because of those assessments, where we feel we need to invest in our curriculum, and we need to invest in our PD for our teachers, and that's done with the administration.
I, I think, and it's been a problem for 30 years, David is well aware, these formulas that they come up with, the state comes up with, they generally seem to leave small towns at what I feel is quite a disadvantage. And some more, more than others. But I am to the point where I really think that we need to start having a very active letter-writing campaign to our legislators, I mean, emails and so forth, not only on school formulas to help these towns, but hey, what about this $205,000 we need from Nemo? Why can't somebody pull the rug out from under that rat hole so that money gets freed up? There's a lot of issues when it comes to state funding that are being, as far as I can tell, they're being ignored. Certainly, an increase in the income tax should be able to help free up a little cash to take care of these commitments. So, I mean, we haven't seen the first red cent on Nemo.
And there's no indication that we're going to see it any time soon, if at all, from what Doug went to the Nemo meeting today said, is the discussion down there.
And I mean, this is, these are the things that make an extra $14,000, make that cheese quite a bit fine, is that we're waiting on so much money from other sources that we don't know if it's coming or not, and we really can't make a decision.
And also, just because I'm working with the budget and all the committees and departments and so forth, this is many years in a row that we've asked for a level-funded budget here in town. People are coming in with it, but saying it absolutely cannot do the job, promise it. And CPI or anything else, the town hasn't done that either. So it's just, there are a lot of issues there.
A lot of things for us to discuss.
Just to prove that the board up here has three different views, I just want Ted to know, I was in support of your letter in principle because I think you were trying to convey, no, we can't do this, it's hurting the town. So if we had had to sign, I just wanted to know, I understood what you were trying to convey to the... to convey to the school.
Certainly don't feel that you can't sign that.
No, yes, I still, no, I just, we, 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 so I just share...
I mean, I would have liked not to sign it because I'm not sure that it's, it's that absolute a position today. But I mean, certainly get as many, you know, certainly we'll open the door for it.
I, I know that the finance committee directed its chair to send a letter, one last revision, and that the finance committee sent a letter and also provide a copy to the revised letter that the select board. And you gentlemen connect as individuals or as a board as you so choose. Second one?
Yes.
An revision would be the tone, can I ask you?
Any further discussion?
My concern is that if, if the eighty thousand is rescinded, this is enough. You really gotta change this letter.
Yeah, that's correct.
This letter isn't really...
The concept of the letter was to be sent to the school board in anticipation of tomorrow night so that they understand that it's the finance committee's position here last year.
Yes, mayor, may I get brought tomorrow night too?
That, that was my understanding is that the school committee chair would have liked representatives for every town to be there at the meeting, understanding that Asheville has another obligation tomorrow night and to be there. I was directed that should a letter appear and no one from the finance committee or select board be available to read it, that I have been asked to read it out loud at tomorrow night's meeting.
That would be the kind of...
Okay. And what kind of revisions would...
As the chair be necessary, the board feels it's a little harsh, so less assertive, less assertive.
But also remove select board maybe? Because you say...
Well, I put that in my apps. I put... That's an odd idea, the select board.
So it could be removed even more easily, right?
No, I understand.
That lasts...
I understand. With the finance committee alone, right? I'd just like to pursue this a little further, only because it's a big number. We all understand that. In fact, this year, if you take what's proposed as the Mohawk district operating budget, it's been allocated to Asheville along with the capital allocation, it represents a projected forty-eight and a half percent of our total town's budget. About half. Last year it was forty-seven point five percent. So it's going up a percent. And I take your point that perhaps none of this funding is adequate in order to achieve what we'd like to have for our children. But, the thing that is always compelling to me is to see that this one big number gets passed over seemingly very briskly in our town meetings and equivalent over four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the dog work or something like that. It just seems bizarre to me. And I, I would like to know a little bit about, what's your recommendation? When I sit here, David, the exception, but I sit here looking at these, this variety of, of spreadsheets that we get from the school board and from the business manager there, the presentation we heard on February twentieth and so on, I find numbers on one spreadsheet that don't stay with numbers on another spreadsheet, both of which seem to reflect fiscal year two thousand and fourteen projections. And I'm a little at sea with respect to which is which. Now, again, the scheme of things and a huge differences, but it's, you know, a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, that sort of thing. And I would just like to know a little bit more about, from your standpoint, as our representative, what, what's your recommendation about our school budget?
I've been talking so much tonight. Um...
We've got more experience with this budget.
Do you think we should vote, should we recommend to the town citizens that we go with the earlier figure that we heard at the public hearing? Or that we go with the eighty thousand dollar increase, for example? Maybe you have a...
Well, I think, you know, we're both Poppy and I stand. I know mine's been in the newspaper several times.
Yeah.
When, when I was doing budget meetings, I said, we usually set goals for the administration at the beginning. And like we said, the last couple of years, we said we want a flat assessment to the towns, we have money set aside for rainy day, this is a rainy day with the economy. And this year, we said, okay, we said we'd do that for three years, we have to increase assessments to the towns. We said, how much? We set an original target of one percent. I went and crunched the numbers and said, I think the towns would all pass unanimously at one and a half. No, still not knowing how much each town would break down, but I said, I think that that would pass. I said, two I can handle, two and a half is too much for me. I really did not think that would pass unanimously. And I think it's important that we not fight amongst ourselves, that we're so small, we need to work together for those creative solutions that deal with the big issues and not be like bickering children saying, I want this much of the pie, I want that much. It's not productive, it's not helpful. So I had a very hard time passing the two and a half budget. I cannot vote for the additional eighty and I won't. I will vote to rescind tomorrow night. Again, I want all this passion and everybody here to deal with the bigger, long-term solutions. And if I have just a second, there's another thing on our agenda for tomorrow night. It's a vote to authorize the school committee chair to request member towns to appoint a select board member to work with the school committee chair and the superintendent on district long-term planning. Not that any of you need anything else to do, I know I'm wearing fifteen thousand hats as it is. But just to be there and discussing on yourselves, if you'd be willing to participate in that, what would be...
And Ron's already volunteered for that. I listened a little bit, I don't know if I'm persuaded or dissuaded, so. I think it's a good idea that, because there's a bigger problem out there that has to be solved and any way that we can enable solutions is gonna be a very positive thing. Poppy, you've been very quiet. And that is not like Poppy.
I, I voted for the increased budget. I was persuaded by the fact that so many of people from Asheville were there. I, I feel that it's imperative upon us to provide the best possible educational curriculum that we can for our children. However, having seen the impact that that vote has taken on the towns, I will probably vote tomorrow to rescind, right, to, to go along with rescinding the eight thousand dollar...
I, I appreciate, I appreciate you sharing that. And I, I wouldn't be any kind of conservative if I didn't say that I, you can't, the cure may not necessarily be just throwing more money at.
That's right. So the, the need becomes to, as Emily said, to think creatively, to get outside that box and to look at what we have. We have three new teachers, we have strong administration in all of the schools, we have parent advocates that are willing to go to whatever lengths are necessary for the kids. And with that in mind, I would hope that we can work together to provide what's necessary.
I, I would hope that someone would, would try to, try to be on, on, on a long-term planning. Because as you explain how the budget process works, it, it makes me think of driving a Greyhound way back at the emergency exit. Okay? Because we're really not budgeting the needs of the school as much as we are trying to figure out what's gonna pacify the town. I mean, that, that, you're working backwards on the number. And that has been going on for a long time, but systemically, it's wrong.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt, if I didn't explain myself correctly. That was from the school committee perspective. We set a goal for the administration. On the other hand, the principals, every year start from scratch. They don't work from the budget from last year. They start from scratch and they said, this is what we need, this is what our kids are, this is what our needs are. And they come to the superintendent from the other side. And so it works from both ends into the middle.
But it ends up commonality administration.
He says, the towns can only afford this much and the principals want this much, we gotta figure out a way. So this is how, I didn't walk away with a one percent budget, I walked away with a two and a half percent budget. And the principals did not get the eight hundred thousand dollars more that they wanted, that got cut out.
That got lost.
That's how it works, Tommy.
Well, it just, it just, it just seems like we're... And it, it may not be a whole lot different than what we, you know, on, on the town's having budgets.
So much of our budget, the school committee budget is mandated by the state. And you've got so many fixed costs.
And I think, I think reversed.
And it's not being reversed.
The reality is, is that chapter seventy, which is the primary source of funding for the region.
Right.
Also, we get chapter seventy, we have more on that in a few moments, but I believe it's been capped for three years by the general, by the general court. So every dollar of increase has to come from local resources.
Right.
So it's...
Well, we've long, we've long talked about, and over and over repeatedly, how the state's seemingly, as we negged on its support of transportation for this regionalization concept. According to Gwene Conde, that alone, if it were fully funded for a given year, would allow the school to do so much more and keep going.
I mean, even if they went up to seventy-five or eighty percent from the sixty, minus sixty that they're, that they're budgeting now, or funding now, it would be, we would be in a, we would be in a better place.
Sure, we have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, it's your, thank you.
For the letter, send a letter from finance committee only, the select board, modified wording to decrease tenacity. Did I have that a little too long?
It's been done.
Not tenacity, but... Vitriol.
Oh, vitriol.
Whoa.
You're trying to go away.
Less, a less assertive tone, I think is the right...
I think the point you said is vitriol.
A.C.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, all right. So all in favor of that, say aye.
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 So we will fashion a letter and provide copy to the select board.
Right. Probably a perfect segue.
One other thing, I'd like to support Ron, his compliments to both of you for all the year for the school committee, it sums up. It's a struggle to...
Awesome. Awesome. Takes a surgeon out of intestinal porridge too.
Most of the time...
We appreciate that.
They've wrote it in the papers.
I, I think I speak for the entire finance committee when I say that I think we also appreciate all that you've done. I mean, this is hard work, this is very hard work, it's complicated, goes over many, many more weeks than many of us know.
Very time-consuming, extremely time-consuming.
I, I think you often perhaps find yourselves feeling kind of caught between the town and schools and trying to kind of broker some understanding here. I think you've all appreciated very much what you've done. Emily and Poppy both.
Godspeed on your search for the sweet spot.
I quote too often, David, when I'm in a committee.
So I, I'm gonna break my own rule, but I'm gonna open up for some brief remarks. I mean, we've got some parents here, if you've got some brief remarks that you'd just like to add, is worth something that we can think about.
Yeah. Tamara Sloan, Asheville, Lexington. Kids in three schools, Sanderson, Heath and Mohawk. Again, I, I, I say again because I've had lots of conversations, but it is so complex. I wish I came here with some clear passion to say, this is the answer and I just wanna get everybody I know to do it with. There isn't a clear answer. I think, I agree with everything most of you have said tonight. And, and I know that all of you are in incredibly difficult positions and you're not well-paid at all. And, who get paid? Not this year. Great, we just wiped that one out. But, and I think that it was regretful that, you know, quick history, that some of this, the focus of a lot of the passion which was generated initially by students about a particular teacher, the paper really took a lot of that and ran with that. And that's what a lot of you read about. And I think most of students respectfully aside, because I, I also agree that a teacher that, that creates such passion in kids is, that's something to look twice at. But I also wanna say that that's not my job, it's the administration's job to manage that kind of thing. And I want them to have that power because there are plenty of things you probably don't know about that. But I have been coming to meetings recently and it's kind of like a confluence of issues. There was this individual teacher and then I, with the kids in the school, has been seeing such hardship. So many teachers who are so strained and not getting what they're needing and, and my kids having troubles and us asking ourselves questions about, are these students right for our kids, are they meeting our needs? Why are so many of our friends leaving? And what's going on? And I don't wanna give up, I wanna help. So I'm trying to create a day basis of volunteers and I'm going into the high school and I'm meeting with some of these teachers with some volunteers. And then I, a teacher almost broke down and cried because he's so, he is so taxed with all of this stuff on him and he can't give anymore. And I have project-based learning teachers say to me that their budget for each student for the entire year was a dollar and five cents. And they can't do project-based learning when they have a dollar and five cents. And we're trying to find parts online and have bake sale rates, two hundred dollars for a few things like this. And I, so I come to these meetings just to also say, I'm gonna throw myself in the fire too because there is such huge need there. And I don't know what the answer is and I don't want it, the town against it. But I want us as parents to come forward and say, there's, there's a crisis going on. And I know what the answer is, but people are pulling out more. And our teachers are hurting and our kids are hurting. And there's some good things happening, I'm not saying that there aren't. There have been some good moves at many of these schools by many of these leaders. There are controversies with some of them, definitely, and, and so nothing is smooth and easy and obvious. But that's really all I wanna say is that we're, we definitely are late to the, to the meetings. And it's because a lot of this came together through some of us and we thought, oh my God, all these people are leaving. And that's a really bad thing for all of us and for our towns as well. So yes, we're on the bandwagon for all of us and we're doing whatever one of you are gonna be part of those committees, but really want everybody to hear what's going on in the schools. Because I think a lot of people making decisions don't almost know what's happening in the schools because many of your kids aren't there anymore.
Thanks, David. Laura?
Laura, Esther Wells. So I've been on the LAC at Sanderson for a while and until next year, I'm on staff at Sanderson. And I just wanted to clarify quickly, just so, sometimes there's just little details I appreciate people would know. It looks like we're gaining time interventionists, we're gaining a point five seven. That actually happened this past budget year, but because the budget had already been passed, it only shows up now. So we've had full-time math specialists, it went from half-time the year before to full-time this year. And then we're losing, so Sanderson is losing two paraprofessionals and a point four of a speech and language teacher who does a lot of writing work and some secretary hours each day. So just to know that Sanderson actually is taking a hit, even with all that's going on. And there are fewer numbers, but when you think like, oh, so there might be four less kids, that's not really, the needs aren't going on that much. So, you know, I know what it's...
It's not all of a sudden a whole class disappeared.
No. Yeah. So there, you know, it's always hard to find where to cut. I have some concerns that, that direct work with children is being cut, that that was the choice to make.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Andy Wells for Lesser Half. I, I just want to also point out that the budget, let's assume the eighty thousand tomorrow is assumed to be, the budget that will result is still three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars less than the budget that was passed in two thousand and nine. So we ought to keep that in mind, that it's not some gravy train that keeps, people keep ladling on to. It's actually a smaller budget than was, than, I assume your son went to school, I think there's someone in school five years ago. So, and I, and I wanna highlight that Sanderson is taking some cuts. And I wanna highlight that these cuts are in the lowest-paid workers, who I think are very effective. And I think any, any employees that work directly with, with the kids in any capacity interventions passed, I think are valuable and a school system, a school district should look twice. I wanna just apply to myself the same criticism I extend, or the same suggestion I extend to you, that Emily's school chair said at the night, on the night that the budget was passed. And that is, he, he said that not a single finance committee or select board member from any town in the district attended any meetings where the budget was created and hashed out. So, I find myself looking at, going back, I see my wife's position is cut next year, so I go back and I start looking at the budget line by line. I could talk for three hours about things I think should be done differently, but I realize that's a conversation for another time. But these issues will be coming back and there will be... But these issues will be coming back, and there will be tough decisions in the future that go directly to whether we want to put resources in the classroom, or into leadership, or how we want to do it, or into technology. There are lots of difficult questions that go right to priorities in terms of how, where is our money best spent? So it's not just a question of how much money we spend, but I want to suggest that this budget is ripe for examination in terms of how we're spending that money. But the larger point for this, I think the main point in terms of this year in getting a budget passed is that, assuming that the budget is rescinded tomorrow, and I just want to clarify, I think Emily, you maybe, I'm not sure whether you intended this or not, but my impression was, the school committee passed that eighty thousand more in response, largely in response to a number of students who came out to speak. I mean, I was at both meetings where the budget was passed and where the monies were added. And I mean, I said something nice about French, because I love my kids to take French, but I believe it was really the students who were asking for that, and so the school committee, I think to be fair, whether you agree with adding eighty thousand or not, it was student democracy at work, and for that, I applaud it. I can't actually speak to the issue of peer leadership, because I don't, my child doesn't, is too young to be involved in that, but I think it's important to acknowledge it. It was a student-led movement that I think was, that was behind putting that budget. So going forward, I just want us to appreciate and keep in mind that there are people who are losing their jobs in this district, seven or eight or ten, and other things are getting increased that would make one want to question, but this is something to look at another time. Just want, I just hope there's some acknowledgement here that there's a little bit of pain going around.
And I can't believe on either of these boards that we don't understand intimately, as we can going through all the budgets, town budget as well as going through the spreadsheets and seeing what the school, I mean, I tell people, you can follow the schools, you've got a pretty good idea of what's going on in schools if you just happen to pick up some paper and read it every morning. And Mohawk always seems to be front page above the crease if there's any news at all. Frontier, you have to dig for a little bit, but Mohawk's normally right there. So, but, you know, I mean, we certainly know that we have to cut, you know, it's not just the school that finds itself in these financial positions. I mean, we're gonna have plenty of places where we're gonna take the cleaver to it. But I understood, and like I said, historically, Asheville is a great supporter of education, and I don't think that's ill-found, my decision. Yes?
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
Eric Nelson, Buildingville Road, happy to be here tonight. You know, the members of the Finance Committee and certainly the Select Board did a great job balancing competing interests across the board. I have two sons in the school system, very proud that I have them graduate from Mohawk. I think that there is a history, I've been in town for a couple of decades now, of just what you were talking about, Asheville supports education. I think the quandary is that when the state sets the ratios, they're setting the minimum bar that municipalities have to spend to afford education equality across the state. It's those towns that add to that bar that exceed the twenty-seven. It's the examples of ambulances, and I know they have a different tax structure, I know they have a different income level, I know they have a different population, okay? But the quality of life in West County is intrinsically tied to its public education system. And I was quoted in the paper, it takes nine towns. Well, yes, Rowe is part of one of the nine towns. Okay, it's not on the assessment because they have a special, you know, gig, but one of the things here is the unfunded mandates like transportation. We have the largest geographic regional school district in the state. If you could take a GIS map and did miles per pupil versus reimbursement, impose that on, say, Arlington, it would be a big wake-up call. I've talked to the state reps, I think it's something the Select Board has to do. That reimbursement quotient alone can follow this whole argument. But at the same time, I think that there's a democratic principle here, that the citizens of Asheville may want to be able to have the opportunity to make the choice at town meeting to spend the extra money on education. And I know it's a hard, you know, something to chew on, and I know there's a lot of competing interest, and I know we don't want to go to the transfer station and say, we're gonna have to vote for a two-and-a-half override. But if the two-and-a-half override is a vote that these bodies here tonight want to put on the floor, I'll be at town meeting supporting that for education. And I think that that's something that Asheville can spend a leadership ball in West County, and if we set the ball in motion, I think with the other kind of intrinsical oversight that we're talking about here, that we can find other ways in the future. But I think at this point, there's kind of a critical mass to move it ahead in a positive way and say to our kids who have vocalized it, that there's something special here going on, and we support it. So I would urge the Finance Committee and the Select Board to support the eighty thousand dollars, look for the fourteen thousand. I know there are trees down on Buildingville Road all the time, I have to drive around them, but, and I know those are the real hard choices, okay? Four thousand here, four hundred and fifty-five here, but it's an investment in the future here. If our kids can't get an education and can't live in town when they're adults, what happens twenty years from now to our tax base?
Probably twenty years ago, one of the big things that made impact with me, maybe it was twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, your father, Emily, was on the school board, and he came in and he was trying to hammer out a little bit. And he made a very compelling argument, and I can almost quote it to you. He said, what in the world is the town's responsibility besides educating the children? A little bit of public safety, keep the roads clear, what would be a better, that's really stumbled me, and you can relate to him, but I'm still paraphrasing his argument at that time. But on these statistics Ron, that Ron passed out, you know, about, I think it's on bullshit, because I think one of the big things that influences these numbers is that a lot of students don't have parents that are interested as you are, or that we were. And it's unfortunate, and they all need to be educated, but I think a lot of, a lot of the education, you know, not all the education comes from the school, in fact, probably a damn small amount. And so the statistics, I kind of throw it to the side because of that, because I know that not everybody, as much as we'd like everybody to be equal, they're just, they're just not starting out that way. Doesn't mean we can't help them, but.
This might be the perfect moment to segue into our last item on the agenda, which is the other piece of the education budget, the vote budget.
The vote budget. So thank you for coming in and sharing those thoughts, and that's great.
Thank you all.
All right. What information do we have on the vocational budget? Do we have a breakdown at all on students or, the school committee doesn't have anything to do with vocational, we haven't got any? What university do you get? Between ten and twelve percent of our transportation costs?
No, 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 this is right here. Sit right here. I can get her from the back. Maybe it's more appropriate to.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to open this by, I'm gonna pass this over to David in just a moment, but essentially what we're distributing here are two documents, one prepared by David and one by myself. And the bottom line, I think, will be that we on the Finance Committee think that it might be sensible for the Finance Committee and Select Board together to request that the Mohawk district work with our representatives, Asheville's representatives, to study and reduce vocational transportation costs as soon as practical. This is based largely on some research, some initial research that David has done here. And it may involve, I think, some imminent steps that we might be able to take to save a little money this year, but failing that, we're almost certain that if it were attended to properly, we could save some money next year, and perhaps on an ongoing basis. And there might be some structural issues that would have to be addressed in terms of setting up a small committee. But let me turn it over to David here to kind of tell us a little bit more about how we got here. David?
It was about in fiscal '05 that I, a tenure or so run on the Finance Committee. And during the last two years, it became apparent to me that our, how we were managing our vocational operations was problematic. In fact, we found a lack of communication between town and town, not the best way of arranging transportation, confusion over state reporting, where Asheville actually lost three years of state aid, local aid to Asheville, and certain other poor economies. But fundamentally, the primary problem that was causing all of this was sort of a sense, sort of a lack of oversight, and nobody in some sense really in charge. So let me just kind of give you the big picture. Towns have a responsibility to provide three forms of public education, elementary ed, secondary ed, and the vocational education for those kids who want it. And towns can provide education in one of three ways. They either can build a school, and run a school, town school, we had one here for many years, for elementary, secondary, or for vogue. In fact, at one time, Asheville Sanderson Academy furnished education for all three. Or the second way is you can join a regional school district, be a member of town or a region, and the region furnishes those, either it can be a tech region, or an elementary region, or a secondary region, or in the case of Mohawk, a K-12. The third way is, if you aren't a member of a region, and you don't have the ability to have a town in Asheville, I'm not proposing, rebuild a vocational school. I don't think that's a smart way to go. So what way, what's the third way? The third way is that you will tuition your kids to another school. Now, all of the towns that surround us are different, and we're in the middle, and let me just walk you through it a bit quicker so you can see where we're going with this. Comby has a local school committee, they're a member of Franklin Tech, so their local school committee doesn't have to worry about that. And they belong to a secondary region. Comby Buckland belongs to an elementary region, secondary region, Mohawk, and they also belong to Franklin Tech. So they don't have any local school committee, they don't need a local school committee. All of their education is taken care of by regionalization. Now, in the case of Covington, this is where I want to draw a distinction, Covington belongs to a K-12, just like Asheville. Covington does not belong to a vogue district, just like Asheville. Covington retains a local school committee for purposes of vocational education. When I left the Finance Committee back in '05 or thereabouts, we had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar vocational budget. So let me walk you around. Today, our vogue budget is four-hundred-and-thirty thousand, roughly doubled, where I left it off when I started my eight-year Rip Van Winkle sleep, and went back in and the numbers weren't. The vogue budget is the number-two line in our budget, exceeded only by the Mohawk assessments. And it rarely is given more than thirty seconds of examination, and that's been unfortunate. So early on, when I joined the committee, Ted and I had a cup of coffee, I said, I'm gonna have a little bit of time, but I'd like to put some effort into where there may be fruit, low-hanging fruit, that will benefit us. Because I know we're going up, are, is there a chance that, you know, we have some potential economies here? And we have fourteen children in our Asheville School Department. It's called a non-operating school department, it has a budget, it gets state aid, it has children, we don't have a schoolhouse. Eighty-two thousand is spent for tuitioning them, or for transporting them to Smith School and Franklin Tech. We have seven students at Smith, and we have seven students at Franklin Tech. Tuition is about three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, and that adds up to a four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand current year budget. Now, if you take a look at your paper, let me walk you through a little bit of this. And what's it look like for next year? Well, I have kind of a hard time pulling all the information together. Meredith's given, it's been helpful, I finally have my hands on the annual state reports. I met with our director of transportation facilities down at Mohawk, Robin P., she's been very helpful. And I've gone to Student Services, and I hope one week from now, we'll have our first glimpse into what enrollments are gonna look like for next year. Few of our kids are graduating, but there will be new students coming in, I'm sure. Smith, for example, is having their open house, I think, tomorrow at Smith School at Mohawk for students. And of course, they're always out there, you know, beat nerd room, looking for students. These numbers, the enrollment numbers that you see here, we are one of four towns that do not belong to Franklin Tech. So we're in the same boat as Plainfield, Falmia, and Charlemagne. The numbers I have here are tentative, I'm still trying to nail these hard numbers down for right now. So getting information now is not as easy as it used to be, things are different. The situation that I wanted to check in as I started gathering, it appeared to me that there might be some potential for economies in busing. And I looked down and sat down with Robin and got a handle on how they're operating. Some years ago, I think they put in place a policy, it probably wasn't the best policy, which was each town was on a tone for busing. We'd be before, earlier on, when I was on the Finance Committee, it's had always been the practice, is we considered these four towns as a territory, and we wanted the towns to share routes and share equipment to the, you know, to get the very best economy. But apparently about four or five years ago, the buses were, the vans, generally the feeder vans, there was one for Plainfield, there was one for Charlemagne, there was one for Holly, and apparently in some years, it might have been three kids in Plainfield, and two kids in Holly, and one van could have easily handled both of them. Well, in a sort of a limited sense, that's slowly improving, but right now, we have three eight-passenger vans serving the four Plainfield, the seven Asheville, and the three Holly children who were attending Smith. And sitting down with Robin, when we took a look at the routing, we found that it would be very easy, or at least I'm very convinced, having done the routing for many, many years, that we could actually, we could probably do it with one vehicle, but we could easily do it with two vans, and actually, both routes would be short. Because if the Plainfield van simply came through, it picked up three Ashfielders, then the van, with its remaining children in Asheville and Holly, that their route would be improved, they wouldn't have to go out to Cape Street and so forth and so on, so both routes would be improved. Now, this raises a number of questions. What about the contract? I have a copy of the contract, and I, the only stumbling block, I don't see it. I have a copy of the contract, and I, the only stumbling block, I don't see it, but there may be a number of days of notice before a route change can be made. And then again, it would seem to me that the bus company, which is the Smith School District, right, would be willing to wait there. So we have weeks ago to go on our budget, there may be some economies. This one van that we could save, that could save us $12,000 right now if we can implement this change. Right now, that would be a savings of $12,000. And if we can, you know, based on how the numbers will look for next year, assuming we can keep this change in place, if the numbers don't overwhelm us, there would be another $36,000 in savings on next year's budget. Now, there are some other issues and some other problems, but I call this issues and opportunities. There are opportunities we have, I believe, to further streamline the vocational operation and make it better for the four involved towns, so that we get the absolute best bang for our buck when it comes to vocational education. So I sorted out the things that I think we need to be, this is the big picture. I think we should, I believe it would make sense to go after this change. We'd probably have to jump through a few hoops, we're gonna need the support of the Central Office, we're probably gonna have to go face-to-face with the bus company. But we, you know, we've got some problems, and I think we ought to do something about it. Here's one thing we can do, stop making some progress. The immediate action would be to see if we can implement that change for right now. But we also have short-term action. By short-term, I feel that everything that we need to do for fiscal '14 budget, we've got, what, what are we gonna have to do? That's what I'm defining as short-term. And can we coordinate our efforts with the other three towns? Can we build for next year's budget a new vocational model? Now, when I left off, I was on the Vocational Advisory Committee that I helped reestablish back in '05, and we got four towns together. And what we did is said, "Hey, we don't need to send new vans or buses all the way to Turner's Falls or all the way to North Hampton." So we called the town of Covington, the school committee. Remember, I mentioned they have a little school committee, and they exist for, and they contracted for a bus from Leaven House that had, I think, 44 seats and they're carrying their 14 kids. And I said, "Hey, what do you think about us meeting you at the Goshen Congo Church, and we'll transfer our kids off to you, and we'll give you some money? We'll help you turn those empty seats into dollars." And they were happy, and we were happy, because we saved a pile of money in doing it that way. And the other thing is, is right now, we've got our tech, you know, now we've got seven kids on one van going to tech, going all the way to Turner's Falls, sometimes riding right behind that Buckland Tech bus all the way to Turner's Falls. And maybe, just maybe, like we did eight years ago, maybe we could sort of transfer and save a lot of money. But in order to have this work, we've gotta coordinate all four towns together, and we've gotta have help from the school committee. And the longer-term action is we've got to put this back together so that it'll be fixed and it'll stay fixed. It was fixed back in fiscal '05, and damn it all, we're gonna fix it and make it stick this time. I think we need to reestablish a local school committee. Ted's known on that, and that's what I have to say. So there.
Thank you.
Well, you said it.
Thank you, David.
So I would hope that both boards will line up on this, and I'll let Ted speak to his report. Let's get going. I'd like to see, let's get going.
Just a point of information for the minutes, and to make sure I understand, when you talk about the town having lost money over the last few years, is that based on the assumption that there could have been different transportation arrangements?
The loss of state aid, is that what you're asking about?
I wasn't clear what you...
It was loss of state aid related to the fact that our town wasn't reporting properly.
That's what, but that's...
That was back in fiscal '000, '02, and '03.
Oh, okay. Right, because we have talked about recently, and those are all happened.
Earlier on, the Mohawk was doing the state reporting. In my opinion, maybe this committee can look at this, I think Mohawk and not the towns should be doing the state reporting, because they do state reporting automatically, and our town isn't good at it necessarily. And it's just like doing their taxes. Experts know where the loopholes are, because that's what drives your money, your town, is how you report to the state. And I just got our state reports here, our accountant is doing state reports now. Are there things that we could pick up on to get the job done better, get more...
I did talk to her about it, and she does do it for all the towns, and she has been doing it for a while with the accountant before I was doing it.
But that's just something, again, on the long-term plan to talk about. But we've got a lot of work to do in six weeks. But this has in terms of...
So what you're saying is...
Forty-eight thousand dollar change, probably.
Since we got away from that vocational brokerage deal, that the transportation seems to be hanging out there and not being managed as closely as it can, since it's not really going through that...
I don't know where the fingers, where the fingers point. I think the biggest problem came in the late '90s when Mohawk went K-12, the local Asheville and Plainfield school committees were dissolved, and the Mohawk region really distanced itself from the vocational operation. They're administering it, they're brokering it.
I really feel that the discussion needs to be not where the fingers are pointing, but just say, "This is what needs to be done," and find out an easy mechanism to get it done.
Exactly.
If it, since we, our vocational business is really divorced from the Mohawk Trail Regional School District, right? We got rid of that whole brokerage scheme where we ran three years in arrears or whatever it was.
Someday, I'll talk to you about that. That was a good system.
Well, but we got away from it, regardless if it was good or bad.
Yeah, that actually further distanced us from, and created a rift and control and a gap in between the school and the town, and it was sort of like a self-perpetuating machine that ran on its own steam. So decisions, fundamentally, all decisions right now are made by accountants, administrators, you know, bus drivers, whatever.
Even though the Mohawk Trail Regional School District has really nothing to do with the vocational, I mean, we pay both directly, they're still administering some transportation for us.
They do the contractors for the transportation, although they don't have to. I mean, a couple of years, actually, we went out and did it on our own, 10 years ago, so... What's the best way to do it? All I know is that having all those four towns work together is really important, because that's how you're gonna get economy. And coming up with a better, longer-term plan for the management of this is necessary, because the current system is obviously not working well. We have, you know, the busing, we can do better, and bus, all of us working together could be better than this.
Well, I mean, I can see that you could have seven going to Franklin Tech, and, you know, this year, there's six, right? And next year, there's only four, right? Because the others have licenses, and you don't wanna pass up a chance to burn lots of fossil fuel.
So what can we do? As a town, working together, boards working together, and Ted has the thoughts on how to go at it.
Well, it seems to me to have David work with the two school committee members would be a way to continue this research, to find out kind of what more we could do to coordinate these other towns, and also pursue further the, kind of the ins and outs of this contract, to see what could be changed here. Potentially this year, but certainly looking forward to the budgeting for fiscal 2014. I think this begins to address one of the, one of the issues that has come up in past annual meetings, and that is, people will ask questions, "Well, how does this vocational budget work? Why don't we join one of these vocational regions, districts and stuff?" And I think many of us kind of sit here a bit flat-footed, and I feel I do.
We did look into it.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure that's the way to go. Some of this is, I think, in the very positive direction, trying to manage better the costs associated with it. It's not that we would in any way limit students who are going to vocational schools, but it seems to me that we should better understand what the cost components are and how well we can manage or effect economies of some kind, to see that we're not missing obvious opportunities and spending money that we would not spend. Again, this is the kind of thing, if you could save 12,000 here, maybe 30,000 next year, you could better afford things that happen in Mohawk, which I think are a little bit more clearly and obviously related to instructional work. So this, this is...
Do you think, do you think forming, I mean, or do we need to form a different type of committee, a vocational transportation committee, and not maybe yet so... I mean, it seems like our representatives to Mohawk Trail Regional School District have plenty on their plate, and this isn't a Mohawk Trail Regional School District issue?
The way we answered the question 30 years ago, and then Reese kindled it 10 years ago, eight years ago or so, was to have a body referred to as a vocational advisory committee. That can work. I think there's really two questions. Should that committee be reestablished? I'm kind of recalling to think, yes, but I think it's time to have a broader conversation on this. That would have reps from each of the four towns. And you can do it any number of ways. It could be school committee reps, or they could be county official reps, or one of each, or whatever. You can mix and match. It has no statutory authority, it's an advisory committee, but it would be the committee that would serve as the link between the school district and the four towns. And the vocationals.
The four towns you're mentioning are...
Asheville, Plainfield, Charlemagne, Holly. And they're contiguous, they form a contiguous block. The separate question is, should we re-establish the local school committee?
Does that really address students going to Smith?
What, the local school committee?
If we went and had some kind of collaborative deal on transportation, talking about transportation. Does that, does that help us with students that elect to go to Smith Vocational?
Sure.
And I mean, the Smith, the Smith, well, you've got a lot on, to the south of us that automatically go to Smith. So I mean, should some of the collaboration be also with, with towns out of the county, Goshen?
Well, I think we just make connections with them as needed. See, one other thing to bear in mind is Asheville opted not to join Franklin Tech in 1975. It was defeated in Charlemagne. Holly Sleckman refused to put it under warrant, and I think Plainfield was not really invited.
Well, it's because they were Hampshire County, I think, David, and they had access to Smith.
The reality is, is that Smith, you can't join Smith because it's not a regional school, although it's old, serves many, many towns. Historically, in the years I've been here, Asheville kids are roughly drawing 50/50. A lot of the draw for Asheville kids is a school of agriculture at Smith, which is not offered at Franklin Tech. There are other majors offered at Smith, not offered at Tech, and also Tech has some programs that they don't have at Smith. Yeah, we would wanna keep contact with these other towns where it's gonna be to our advantage.
See, I, I understand, I believe I understand exactly where you wanna go, and I'm all for it, but to actually mix that up as part of the school committee, I think the thing to do is divorce that as much as you can from all that bureaucracy.
We still need the leadership of the superintendent. We still need the services of this transportation...
For vocational?
Sure. They're gonna, they're gonna be keeping an eye on the buses, they're gonna be working with...
They're keeping an eye on the bus now, and you say it's costing us an extra $36,000 a year? Do we need that eye? If it's costing an extra $36,000?
I think, I think what happens is people, you know, sometimes systems get stuck in a rut, and they do it again and again and again, just the way you do it, and I think that's what happened. You know, well, that's the way we did it last year, and there was, this year, they, to their credit, made an innovation when they saw they had only three kids from Holly going to Smith, and they said, "Gee whiz, why don't, maybe we can, instead of having two vans from Asheville and one from Holly, maybe we can..."
Been a few years.
"...have two vans that will serve both towns." That's been going two years. And now what we're really saying is, let's get, let's take that another step, and let's go back to this four-town collaborative approach, where you put your dots on the map, you find out who's going where, and you come up with the smartest route that's gonna be reasonable and humane to the kids, because they got a long drive. But the routes that we're gonna be able to establish here are gonna be equal or better than what are existing right now. So the question is, I'm not gonna go and do anything unless I have absolute support in the Finance Committee, from the Finance Committee and the Select Board, that you say, "Yes, we want you to go out and see if you can work." I would wanna have a Select Board member with me, and I am happy to roll up my sleeves and do this, and want the support of the school committee, and...
Well, it seems to me the first thing to do would be to, for maybe the town of Asheville, to approach the other three towns?
That should be done shortly. We have to do that shortly. That would be one of the tasks I'd jump into right away.
It strikes me that David, given what he's learned so far, would be particularly appropriate to approach these three other towns, and I think...
Do you think the same?
Raise this idea of a vocational advisory committee. And I don't imagine there would be any problem in making an approach in turn to the Mohawk District if you had four representatives from these different towns saying, "We'd like to talk about a way to coordinate the transportation." I think certainly our Finance Committee would support this, and I get the sense that this could be part of a solution to dealing with some of these school expenses that we're concerned about. So I don't know why this wouldn't be an obvious thing for support at both the Finance Committee level and the Select Board.
Right, but I, I think...
Just two days ago.
Somebody has to plow the furrow here...
Yeah, yes.
...to, to, to approach these other towns.
Right, right. No, I don't think we're asking for the Select Board to kind of step down and try and take this on as another job, and it's the sort of thing that, you know, I think an expression of support for this would be the appropriate way to go at this point.
Would you say one, one representative from each community, so you'd have four people working together that could communicate to the transportation at...
Yep. There's also things to do regarding tuition. I'm not gonna get into any details. It's possible that the tuition rates aren't quite right. That's something we can look at.
Just have a question. The clock ticks ever so quickly, and time gets past us. Would we wanna prioritize what order you wanna take this on in terms of, is it better to go for FY14 first, even though you can see the low-hanging fruit for '13, because getting all the bodies together might not come together as quickly as you want?
Well, we can make the FY13 change unilaterally, I think, on our own, assuming there's no objections from other quarters, and assuming we can work effectively with the contractor. And the, now, let me be clear, there's gonna be a downside. Somebody's gonna lose their job, a bus driver's gonna lose their job, so let me totally trans, so that's not gonna go over well. But it is what it is. And should we shoot for FY13? Absolutely.
The big deal within '13 is that you will have set the stage for '14. And that's a big deal, because if you come in for '14, it'll be a new concept, and I don't know if people will react fast enough to that.
And in order to make the changes for the '14 budget, we have to meet with these four towns in April, so might as well kill two birds with one stone. The other interesting thing I've learned, and that is, starting right now, we are in, Mohawk is in year four of a five-year contract. Next year will be the last year. They are starting to, right now, prepare for the bidding process, and it'll be done late fall, mid-winter, somewhere in through there. This is serendipity for us, because this will give us time, this will give this little committee an opportunity to roll up its sleeves, take time, once we get FY14 nailed down and say, "Okay, what's the best thing for us to do? As Tom points out, should we be totally independent? Or what is the Mohawk and Asheville interface? What's the best interface? Our superintendent, he is also the superintendent in the Asheville School Department, he's the superintendent in the Holly School Department. He takes their applications and approves them when they apply to a vocational school. So, you know, we're together already. They are, in a way, best equipped to oversee the transportation network. They've got skilled professionals in place there.
Emily, have any coffee, or any tea back there?
I like the idea. Remember, it was done a long time ago, and...
And administrations change and it kind of, it kind of got lost in the shuffle.
Got lost in the shuffle.
Is what happened, yeah. And I'd, I'd like to see us try to go back and reestablish. I'd be willing to work with you to reestablish that.
That would be super.
Committee.
So do you think the school committee needs to be part of that? Or do you think one person from each of these four towns?
I have an opinion on that. I mean, I'm all for the idea. I think that's great. I'm not on the transportation subcommittee. I really don't want to be on another subcommittee right now. The pieces that I understand, however, is that with our contract with the bus company and the bus company within the last year or so is unionized, that we have a minimum number of hours and people that we have to hire. And we're dealing with this at Mohawk right now, because we wanted to try to, we're talking about flipping schedules between the high school and the elementary, so that the high school kids can sleep. And we thought, maybe if we could combine bus runs, it would save us money. We're not allowed to combine bus runs. I mean, I know there's problems with having kindergarteners and seniors on the same bus and the whole thing, but you can't, because we're required in our contract right now to have a minimum number of bus runs and hours for our bus drivers. So I don't know if that would come into play for you at all. I do know that the chair of the transportation subcommittee is Heather Davis, and she loves Ashfield as much as Plainfield. And with, between her and Robin Pease, I don't know if we need to have a giant company. I'm glad that you're working with Robin. I think that she's as fabulous as it gets and would be able to handle the whole thing. So I, I, I really don't know. If you need to have school committee members, I don't feel like I would be able personally to contribute anything to this conversation whatsoever.
I would think the thing to do would be if they could come up with one person from the select board or the finance committee in the other three towns. Those four people could be an advisory, just be a conduit to. And, and there's no guarantee that just because it would save money in Ashfield, that it's going to save any money in these other communities.
Right, right. And we may come up against, if I anticipate your comment correctly, that you're, you're up against certain work rules and so on. But if, if that's the case, if there's another contract that's going to be entered into, this might be the time to get some of us teed up as kind of an issue. It's not very favorable from our standpoint to be told, well, we can't afford to give up the economy, because we're required to keep a lot of people employed. How's that work, David?
So for openers, the, I, I think the specific action that's needed is, is that both boards assent and, and give this. I'll gladly serve as a rep from the thing column. I would hope there would be a rep from the select board. I choose not to operate alone, and I'll take Poppy up on her offer. And if we had three people, that starts the process. We need town letterhead. I think we need to write the select boards of Holly, Plainfield, and Charlemagne and see if we can arrange something that'll work for meeting time and place. I think it should go out, out under the, the town letterhead.
Okay, now, I think this is getting a whole lot more complicated than what I just discussed. But maybe I'm seeing it all wrong. The others can chirp in. But I would think of one representative from each town. I mean, I don't think this needs to be a huge. There's no sense making a committee with, you know, with the idea of working with these other towns if the other towns don't participate.
All right.
So if you make the move, David, to the other town.
There would be four.
Okay.
I mean, it may turn out in time, if we get other reps from these other towns, that we would conclude we have to do something over and beyond that. But I think it's right that we should start small and see what we can achieve this way.
I mean, it's not sending you out, you know.
As long as I, as long as I have your support, as long as I can speak with authority to the bus company.
Well, it's more than just the bus company. It's the whole thing about the VOTEC budget. We feel like we have no say in it. And it's been years since I've been here that we know nothing about it. I think this is a great step forward.
David, are you looking for, from us, a letter of support from both boards?
I think I'd like, I'd like to spend a minute that, I want the board to act on this, to act on these suggestions.
Well, how about if tomorrow we draft a letter saying that this has come to the other four towns, the, the other three towns that we will have and I can sign it as select board chair, asking the other select boards in the other three towns to be aware of this, that there's a savings, that if we can do some coordination and we'd like to form a subcommittee that would look into this. And we can mention in it that, you know, our preliminary discussions are saying it could save Ashfield up to thirty-six thousand dollars. We're not, we haven't done the research on what it could save your town, but certainly any efficiency would help, blah, 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 right? And, and for them to get back to us as soon as possible if they have a candidate that would like to work on.
Do you need to work into there the candidate, either from the select board or finance committee? Is they so choose?
I, I don't even know on the other towns if you need to tie it down that close.
No, I'm not sure you do.
Anybody that wants to have a representative?
I think it's up to their community.
And it, it's conceivable, too. I don't know how David did the figuring, but if the thirty-six thousand savings was the best for Ashfield, even if, like you said, you had to pay them a little something, so it makes it beneficial for them to participate and get thirty thousand into thirty-six, that's okay. We're still getting a savings. They get a little bit. It makes everybody want to participate.
And along with what Paul is saying, if you think forward, next year we could have half the number of students. If there was a way that you could make a pool and divide it based on some very simple plain vanilla formula and out-of-state formula, that encourages the change. Because one year we'll have a lot and next year. But if at the end of the day, there's a delta that we save, it makes so much sense that we work together. My only other thought is, maybe you don't want to put the specific towns on there, because maybe you find out that another town somewhere else could play into it. Or are you pretty certain, David, that it's those four towns that would be kind of isolated?
I mean, there are ways we can benefit, like, as I mentioned, how we work with coming.
Okay.
Like, that's an example of how they can help us and how we can help them.
Do, do you need to make any kind of motion to, to help Dave have the platform to go ahead and set up this advisory? And come back to us?
Move away. I mean, if you want to make a motion that I draft a letter, you know, that we draft a letter. I mean, I, I really think what we're doing is asking the other towns to play with us. And, and we're going to get some answers back. I mean, that may take a couple of weeks.
And I guess I just have a question. Is the letter the right way to go first? Because will that lead to a lot of back and forth? What does this mean? What do we do?
Think a lot or call.
Well, I, I mean, should, should we make a couple of calls to the town and see towns and see if they have any interest?
I think we're, I think we're also staying busy right now with the budget and so forth. If we send them a letter, we got a stamp that says urgent on it. I, I think if we send them a letter.
Right, actually, hopefully not have a lot of back and forth tomorrow's or a new poll, but a basic letter saying, are you interested?
Yeah, say, say that we feel that there are significant savings that could be accomplished on the transportation.
I mean, right now, Plainfield is paying one percent for one thing.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
That way it goes right to the, it's not coming through us. But I think, I think it needs to come through.
Yeah, come through.
The question needs to come from the report.
Okay. We don't want to have to try and do it.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to request, we'll formally send it to the other three towns. Select board to select board requesting, you know, saying that there could be a significant savings to your town. We feel there's a significant savings to ours. That we work together and do some advisory on vocational. And please contact David Moore. David Moore would be our contact person on this.
Can I see that letter before it goes out?
See you tomorrow night.
Okay.
Yeah, because then you could go on there in general.
I'll, I'll start off and start talking, start communicating with my colleagues, with you folks, and with the other towns. And this thing will grow however God wishes it to grow.
Yeah, well, I, I really think we're all behind it. You don't have to really start wearing us out early on it, I think. You know, get, get some other people to talk to. Because we're, we're going to have a lot of time for general discussion tomorrow night. What time is it now?
Tomorrow, right?
Yes, it's ten.
I have one other piece of business.
It's like dolls tomorrow. You have a song?
Are we done with school stuff at this point?
I'm done. I've had it. I started today.
But one other piece of business I would like to take out the possibles that could be off my desk and on somebody else's would be this report about the Ashfield House. We're going to take that up at this point.
Oh, that was, you gave that.
I gave that tomorrow, last week. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for all your hours, okay? I don't get here as often as I used to, but thank you for all your hours.
It's good to see you again. Thank you very much. Right there. Send it back. Let's shoot.
All right.
Let's get this off of your desk.
Thank you. This, this was a research project, wasn't it? Yes, it was. It was out, was it not on the agenda for the board tonight? I think so. Yes. This is a report that is basically my summation of information I looked up in response to Ron Kohler's request on behalf of the select board to find out more about the status of the Ashfield House. This has been coming up in discussions of various kinds, at Board of Health meetings and so on and so forth, I think at the select board level. And essentially, the question was, is this an asset of the town? And does the town have any kind of financial stake in property? We could not find a lot of reports.
Just, I just want to clarify. This is really the same information, except you've got it spelled out a little more detail, that, that we discussed with the select board back when we were talking about the contract for the grants. Remember, we talked about it that, I was sitting over on that desk, and I believe we, we briefly discussed it with the, with the select board, that you had looked into it.
I think I may have mentioned it in passing, but I don't think, I certainly didn't have any report at that point. And that.
Maybe we talked about it in the finance committee that you had that request.
Yes, I think that was the connection. That's correct. I think I just updated the finance committee. I was still working on it, got some data and so on. But we looked at it at that point solely from the standpoint of was the contract for the housing authority to manage the property, kind of the property contract. This is different from that, in my judgment. This is basically saying, what connection does the town have with Ashfield House? And doesn't have any ongoing financial interest. There are documents appended to it. I don't want to go through them in detail, but essentially what I've done is I've talked with town council, who provided some documents that related to the time of transfer of this property and sale of it, if you will, to Rural Development Incorporated, which is a subsidiary of the Franklin County Housing and Rehabilitation Authority, HRA, as they call themselves often. I did this with the, the acknowledgement of the then-chair of the select board, Doug Field. He authorized my approaching now with people to ask whether I had latitude to do this kind of thing and so on. And she said, from what she could see, and most especially, this refers to the document here appended, which is called the Amendment to the Note. And I want to cite that in particular, because this amendment to the note was done back, I think, two thousand and four. The amendment to the note says, Rural Development, which was then the new owner, will agree to provide a financial statement pertaining to the Ashfield House project to the town of Ashfield upon request. And so I was checking the document to verify that I could appropriately, on behalf of the town, make that in writing. She said, yes, that you have the duty to do that, because it's something that should be tracked. So essentially, I went through what information I could get from the Ashfield House records and from conversations and data supplied to me by Robin Sherman, who is the executive director of the housing authority. And this is the report, which essentially, in summary, I think that this is probably the place to focus. My conclusion is that the Ashfield House is not an asset of the town. It's been transferred legally some time ago. It's property owned by the Rural Development Incorporated. Secondly, however, the town of Ashfield does retain a secured interest in the property in that if that property is ever sold to a third party or if there's sufficient operating profitability that gets achieved, then Ashfield is entitled to recover part and all of its subordinated debt. At the time of this transfer, the debt was about two-hundred-eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is the balance left over in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar mortgage held by the town. However, and I think this is the flying ointment, if you will, if you look at the last page of this handout or this report, these are the last six years, seven years, of financial performance of the Ashfield House as provided by the housing authority. And it's clear that the income from the variety of sources you see there is insufficient to support the expenses, which are also enumerated line by line. And typically, this property is generating a loss every year. Net ordinary income line fluctuates a little bit, although it's very sparse. You maybe make a thousand, two thousand once in a while. But if you get down after reserve contributions and debt payment that are required, the net cash flow is negative, and it has been for the last six years, to the point where the cumulative deficit, which is effectively owed to the housing authority, as in this report, was about sixty-eight thousand dollars. A more current update is around sixty-six thousand dollars.
So using this accounting method, they're, they're not going to generate any money to hit the thresholds to make any payments to the town?
I don't see it in any near future. Now, they are.
They'd have to make quite a turnaround to make enough money to support a church house.
Yes, that's true. Now, they're trying to do a few things. For example, they're trying to restructure this loan. They were required by the funding authorities, and here I think we're going into the perversity of the Commonwealth. There are two names in the Commonwealth describing this report, which are the funding sources for this entire operation. And they're the ones that have required as part and parcel of the holding of this property to require that you have a fixed interest rate loan with a bank, a commercial bank. Franklin, the, the, Ashfield House has that. At the time they put that loan in the books, there was about six-point-four percent interest, something on that magnitude. And there are some pretty substantial prepayment penalties, which most recently were calculated at around forty, forty-four thousand dollars. So they're trying to figure out a way to refinance. So they're trying to figure out a way to refinance this. I don't know if they can get permission from the state to do this or not. It would seem to me in this era of low interest rates, if they could ever refinance it, it would do a lot to kind of reduce their debt load in that property. They're also trying to renegotiate their insurance and see if they can get larger deductibles and somehow lower insurance rates. They're doing a few other things to see if they can identify economies to make this a bit more profitable. But even at that, my sense is it's a pretty long slog to get to profitability. The long and short of it is, even though I don't think there's anything in the offing about this being returned to a suitable state of profitability so we can get claim on that subordinated outstanding debt, I think we should, as a matter of just general fiscal prudence, monitor this by annually asking for the financials from the Ashfield House, from the Housing Authority, to keep track of where they have gotten to, what progress, if any, they're making, so that we can better identify a potential, you know, financial income that we'd be taking to our program income fund. And I would, my colleague suggested it's not only that we do this on an annual basis as the Finance Committee, but that we include that in our report to the town, which would be a way of kind of publicly disclosing where we are in this and keeping track of it. So that is essentially my set of recommendations, and we do that.
Here's my concern. I mean, you gave us the draft and I...
Yep.
You do it. And you were asked if it was an asset of the town. And I think it certainly isn't. My question is, is it a liability to the town? I mean, if things really go to pot, I don't want to be the last guy turning the lights out.
I don't see how it could be a liability.
Well, I mean, we have a lien on it. If everybody else finds a way to get out of it, we're sitting there. The town of Ashfield certainly doesn't want to own it.
Well, not an asset. We still have vested interests in it.
It really isn't. See, it wasn't our money to begin with.
It material. The repayment of the program income is a potential asset. I think it would be irresponsible of us to just kind of walk away from this, because things can change in three, five, 10 years, where if a third party gets involved and there's greater profitability, we would be doing our citizens a disservice by not watching carefully over this property in which we have a vested financial interest.
If another third party gets involved in it, this sweetheart deal that we have with the Housing Authority, I don't believe goes to the next owner. This is only a deal that we had with the Housing Authority.
How's it read with the third party?
Well, um...
What triggers it?
I think that's right. I mean, it wouldn't travel.
I don't believe it would travel.
There would have to be a point at the point that it changed hands.
This, at the time of transfer to the Rural Development, our town agreed to subordinate the mortgage, note, and loan documents to any and all lenders and equity owners working with Rural Development.
Any and all?
Yep. Current account balance was $287,000. Monthly payments will be eliminated. The note will bear a 0% interest from the date of assignment forward. And the loan will only be due and payable upon the transfer of title of the real estate to a third party, unless sufficient cash flow, in quote marks, exists in the project. Sufficient cash flow, then, is defined as when the project has accumulated a replacement reserve of $90,000. And then each year, only after the project is able to make an annual contribution to that reserve of $5,000. When that occurs, any remaining surplus cash, after normal and existing project expenses have been paid, will be paid to the town toward that outstanding balance. I don't think we bear any liability here. It's that there's a contingency, remote as it may seem, that we might get some money back out of this. But we have no responsibility for operating it. That's under the aegis of the Housing Authority. They've got the management contract. We certainly don't own it as an asset in any way. That's Rural Development.
See, and it's not even clear to us, or to me, and I doubt it's clear to anybody, how many lien holders there are ahead of us. What we said is, we're glad to have last place.
Yeah, I mean, that bank that has the loan outstanding, I think they're one of the lien holders. They're getting interest payments out of this thing.
And the language is that we'll give it up to any and all?
Well, pretty much.
And that it doesn't survive if it's sold away from our debt? Our interest would not survive a sale away?
No.
No, it says a loan will only be due and payable upon the transfer of title of real estate to a third party. So if there are people that step in, they will have a greater interest if they step in from a financial point of view. But if the property is transferred, I look at this as, as kind of a ante up.
And if there is nothing to ante up, nevertheless, our interest expires at that point.
That's a question. Yeah, what's going to happen? You know, is somebody going to come in and say, you know, we're willing to do it, but... They're not going to. But, I mean, it's a reason for us to still believe in Santa Claus.
Oh, the question I had on it, Ted, was when I saw that they had an obligation to provide financial statement, I was thinking of either a review or not. Do they have more formal statements rather than just a kind of a cash flow?
They have a formal audit for the entire agency. I don't know that they have a separate audit to state before the Ashfield House.
Okay.
It's a statement thing.
Would you want, shall I inquire about that?
No, I'll give Tom just a little bit of history of this. What happens is we get these financial reviews, the audits, from, what's the name of the?
Scanlon. Scanlon.
Yeah, Scanlon. And I had a memory that something like this happened. And I was looking through the footnotes, because usually in the footnotes, they would take exception. Is it an asset or something? So it was the board's question of Ted, is this an asset or isn't it an asset? And so I reached out to Ted and said, what's going on here? And it really, the answer is, it's not an asset. But we do have an interest. There's an interest.
Tom Scanlon said it's not an asset. But I went back to him and I said, from my understanding, it should be in some way a footnote as a contingent secured interest.
Exactly.
Now, we haven't seen the audit from 2012. That was going to be due at the end of December. So Scanlon's kind of working it.
They were waiting for the ODA numbers, which are from the government.
Is this going to change at some point from draft to just report?
I'm happy to take the word draft off and sign it. I haven't signed anything yet. I thought you might have more questions about a different kind of analysis. I haven't done much analysis. I've just kind of gathered a bunch of facts. I haven't, I haven't, well, I actually did go through all the financials and did percentage increases and tried to figure out whether these were reasonable amounts. And I've never run a building, so I'm not quite sure I can verify always. But I've had two meetings with Robin Sherman. I've done some financial analysis on a spreadsheet of the expense items and looked for ways in which they've increased, decreased, what their percentages are and so on. I don't see anything particularly suspect here. I'm not a forensic accountant, so I can't give you, you know, top to bottom on that.
We may have missed the opportunity back in 25 or 26. They had a substantial grant, maybe $1.8 million or more to rehab that building. But the permit for doing the building construction is only $700,000. So if there was some other money left, we may have missed the opportunity to say, hey, pay us some on our debt. But that was gone.
If they have the money to do the work, that would have to be to do the work, right? Not pay off loan.
You would think, but if they only had a permit for $700,000.
I mean, I'm not questioning...
It's just if there was any left, I don't know if we would have an opportunity to get it.
Yeah, I would guess, for all the right reasons, Sue Todd and Bill Proman and Rick Chandler made the decision that it was better to have it go than have it fall into itself. And it made the deal work.
To hold the mortgage and third place, or whatever it is.
Better to give the money. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody was of really sound mind if they weren't going to see it.
Because it was, yeah, it was a grant. Yeah, it was back then. There was a grant that was for the town, was the...
That was a big hoo-ride, the day we cut the ribbon on that place.
Well, I think it looks like a pretty comprehensive effort. I appreciate what you've done for that. I mean, that was no small thing, so. I don't, I don't have any issue with Ted's reporting back to us. I'm fine if he wants to, unless someone else does. If he wants to just sign it and be...
I'll personally annotate each of your copies and cross the word draft.
Just annotate one and give it to Mary.
She'll make a copy?
And she will make it, she will attach it as a document to the minutes. This is very important, Ted. Haven't you heard about this? And so she can just attach it, and then hopefully next week we can approve some minutes and we'll be all set. It's part of the education process that we hear so much about.
You're avoiding another open meeting violation. Very good, congratulations. We're supposed to put all those documents in our minutes.
This is good, though, Ted, because this was a big question, and now we have it in the record, so it's good.
Okay. So since it's only...
10:30.
10:30. I did leave a little room in for a little general discussion about the budget. So why don't we get, I grabbed some information from Mary this afternoon. And while it's like on the top of my pile and easy for me to get a hold of, at the back of your budget sheet, where we talk about debt?
Yes. We already have the master budget?
At that master budget sheet.
Yep.
I'm going to excuse myself. I'm going to move the adjournment.
Okay.
I'm okay. I'll move to find it through the adjournments.
We got it.
What's that? Did it be... All right?
Yeah, I've got that, that, that fold.
Oh, okay.
But if we adjourn at this point, can we two citizens sit here and discuss things?
Sure.
I don't think you can deliberate. No, actually, you're not a quorum, so you can.
Exactly. You can say what you want. But we're not a quorum.
We're sharing information with the citizens.
I think you all, it's a journey.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Ted.
So I can be done thinking minutes.
So on the debt?
Yes.
Just so we have a handle on that, why not handle the small things, right? Before we get into the big ones? The highway truck? The highway truck debt?
Where are you going? Oh, the last page.
Last page. Not the...
Debt service accounts, right?
Next to last, not the analysis page. So we're working on fiscal year 14, so this is that $50,000. There's $48,333 in principal. And...
Whoa, really?
$5750. He's breaking that apart. Of the highway debt truck, of $50,750. You breaking that apart?
Yes, I am. This spreadsheet says that $48,333 in principal.
Of the $50,750, same, $48,000.
All right.
$48,000 what?
$48,333 in principal.
Yep.
And $12,0833, $1,208.33 in interest. And that payment is going to be due on March 10th of 2014.
March 10th of 2014?
Yeah. So we're working on the fiscal '14 budget now, so that's going to be the number under highway debt for the truck, the highway truck.
The total of the principal and the interest?
Yes.
Which is?
Which sounds to me like it's $49,541. No.
Is it?
Yeah.
$48,333.
Plus $12,0833. $49,541.33 will be the last payment. That'll be the final payment on the highway truck.
A year from now?
As a, that's right, a year from now. As a reference, that note is at 2.5%. Okay? The fire department vehicle. This note happens to be at 1%. The first payment is $12,1713, which, so it's in the next fiscal year. It's fiscal year '14.
So you're doing $12?
$12,17.
It's the first payment.
It's the first payment. It's set up for two payments.
$12,17, what does that mean?
That's the date. That's the date the payment needs to be paid.
I thought it's a very small payment.
No.
Of 2013, this year.
Of this year.
So it's on two payments?
And it'll be, looks to me like it's $48,445.92. That's a 1% note. The highway garage, that's just going to go on forever.
At 4%?
At 4...
4.8%?
Yeah. I think there is an opportunity. Now, this is, this is under debt. Is the town common? This was a ram jam slam job, and I'm not exactly sure how it happened. But this is not debt excluded. So remember that the money we vote for paying the town common debt comes directly off the levy, unless we vote it from another source. Okay, so when we're bound, my preliminary thought is, if we see that we're going to be bound up by the levy, maybe this is, maybe this is a way for us to get out from under some of that.
How much is it annual?
It's a $15,000 principal payment. Now, in this note, is it 4.4%? But it looks like we're paying on January 12th, the $15,000 and about $900. We're paying the interest on 7/12. And then we pay the interest and the principal on January 12th. So each year, it's $15,000 of principal in, let's see, January 13th. So this will be, this will be 14. These two together will be 14. It would be $15,000, $15,000 of principal and $1,320 worth of interest. There's one payment left. There's one payment after this one.
After fiscal '14?
That's happening in July.
That would happen in July of '15. That would actually happen in July of '15, unless we... That would actually happen in July of fifteen, unless we found a way to pay that last payment or really save a little interest. But the real function would be to open the levy, to make that fifteen thousand dollars on the levy available. I, I don't know if that's right, but I think it's something to be aware of. Especially if we, God, if we can just get a little traction and start looking a little bit further down.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that fifteen thousand, I mean, we'd be lying to say that there weren't places we could, we could grab something.
I had something I've been thinking about, and I don't know if it's right or wrong, but just something to throw out and maybe discuss with my next morning, tomorrow night.
I think that's great. I mean, I think there's gonna be a lot of this, I think there's gonna be a lot of throwing mud at the wall and trying to figure out what sticks and what doesn't.
I've been thinking about the grader specifically, and I just keep wondering, would, would we help town residents in terms of taxes to, we're, we're almost past the winter season, and he was concerned about that grader for the winter, and they're gonna switch to the exterior grader over the summer. Would it be possible, as we work through the money, to put some money aside that says, we're earmarking this for the grader, and then hope to be able to do that again next year? So, it gets bought and paid for and we don't have to do a debt exclusion. I'm just concerned for the people and the taxes. As much as we need to pay for everything, there's only so much, or we're liable to force people to have to leave. Cause for some, you know, it's, not everybody's got unlimited funds.
Oh, no, no, no.
And every little bit we do, even though it sounds, plus it looks like some things will be coming off a debt exclusion. And I just, so I was just wondering if that might be a way, cause that's an expensive item. And maybe we should be planning that way for other residents, cause he's got a list. He can see what's coming his way, so that we're sort of a little bit ahead of it instead of always having to go with it.
Here's, here's what I've, I mean, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about the grader also. I mean, and you start looking at that, and that could keep anybody up at night. I think there, there probably, at some point, we better do something. I mean, to get thirty years out of a grader is quite a jag. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's got tires, it's gonna be trouble, you know? And that machine has given us, it's done a lot of work. I think the blessing that we have, I mean, I'm all for trying to save and pay, but we're not gonna save and pay to come up with that amount of money. I, I think that there's an amount of money that we can come up with. I'm not exactly sure where at the moment. And I think a reasonable type debt exclusion, because what's really in our favor right at the moment is interest. I mean, there's no, you know, if we can spread it out over five years, and if we can spread out a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars over five years at a one percent interest rate, I mean, the, one breakdown on that grader waiting to save would gobble up the interest. As far as that other grader, I gotta, I, I really gotta say, I think that is just probably one of the most foolish things that ever happened. I know it was offered, it was free, but I always go back to a story I was told as a kid. The guy with two manure spreaders always has two broken manure spreaders. You know, he breaks one and he hitches onto the other one until that one breaks, and then he's really in bad shape. You know, and I just really think that's exactly the same thing with these graders. And especially, I mean, they spent a lot of money on that grader when they got it, getting the sand out of it. Right, it was used to make runways in, in the desert somewhere.
But it was cheaper than two hundred eighty-five thousand. And they got some use of it. So, maybe we bought some time on the grader that we're still using that's prime for the winter, who knows?
But maybe they spent six thousand dollars on it that would've been better spent on interest on a new one. I don't know, you know, I mean, it's six, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
You know, and if we could, I mean, is it silly to, to make the loan for a longer period of time if we can get one percent? I mean, God, you're going to buy a new car, though, if it's six years, so that the impact on the citizens, their taxes.
If it adds up thirty-year life, run it up ten years, you know? Well, I mean, there's gonna be with the depreciation.
If you look at Tommy's list and, and things need to be replaced, I mean, you're not gonna get twenty-five years out of the truck. So, he's got trucks on there that are needed to be replaced and some of those things. What did we save last week? Shooting off the hit, ten cents on the tax rate generates twenty thousand.
So, it's a.
But that doesn't mean.
Fifty, fifty cents for a hundred thousand.
Right. But every, not everybody's in a position that every time we make a change like that, I, I mean, I've had people tell me, would you please watch that? I can't afford that any longer. And it seems small when you state it that way, but when the bill comes, and there's multiple things, just anything we can do that potentially keeps that minimized.
Well, you know, people get their tax bills and the first thing they wanna do is run and reassess it. Right, because if their tax go well, that's really the last place to go. Is about ten months before that, you go to annual town meeting and you vote no on some of these spending issues. That, that, that's what, that's, that's the key part of the whole deal. Well, I, I just, I, we gotta, we gotta be talking about this. We gotta feel comfortable talking about where we're gonna go with some of this stuff, because of last, two weeks ago, when we met on Saturday at the firehouse, there was a lot of ideas kicked around on what to do on that. And you can be thinking this time span, or you can get a little braver. I, I mean, I came up with an idea that was called the Lamborghini, I guess, but I'm trying to think out about fifty years. And the more I think about it, the more I, I kinda wonder if maybe we can. You know, unless we're thinking we're gonna power all this stuff with something other than electricity, maybe, maybe we could come up with, I mean, I would, I would just love to see the power lines buried and have a pedestal out here and have a big conduit to both tie everything together and make it look like something pretty permanent. And, and, you know, very candid conversation, Robin Poitier says, you know, that, that would be awesome. That would be just, there'd be no problems. You know, we could make that so we could, all the changes and it'd be easy. But he says it'll be expensive. And my position is, I have heard no one from the fire department, the fire association, or anything, talk about a new firehouse. So, so, so I would, if, if everybody's happy with, with the facility they have, getting wired in correctly and the town hall, you know, I mean, those, but those are long-term things. I mean, we gotta get into a big discussion with, with other committees and so forth to try to tie everything together. Maybe not whole committees, but representatives from the committee. I think there's a lot of prioritizing at some point that needs to go on, but there's, there's no end to things to be done.
How would saving, keep it out of the levy? That, just, cause I'm not real familiar with the process. Your suggestion of saving a little bit every year?
Well, I was thinking, like, if we could put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away this year and say, okay, we were gonna do that, plus a little, let you save it, and then don't get it the next year, a hundred and fifty, you'd have three hundred thousand.
Take smaller pieces.
Yeah, and I, I'm gambling that we could get one more year out of the current, because we're already at the end of the season where he was worried about that particular grader for the winter. And I said, well, we skated through it, couldn't we make one more year? And then if, we wouldn't have to add on to anybody's tax.
But what the, what the cheapest thing really be to do, when I have, I know a debt exclusion is just money on top, but to run it, to do the debt exclusion at one percent for ten years? That would even be cheaper, you know, I think, because you're, you're half of the depreciation life if it's a twenty-year machine, so. I, I'm, I'm a little surprised that some of our capital doesn't run longer than, you know, like a highway truck. If, if its life should be five years, you'd be running the loan out five years, you know? Or pay it off as quickly as possible.
Because there's always something behind it that's gonna need to be.
You need, you need some relief of, of the debt exclusion to allow for the next. We see low demand right after one after another.
And I, and I don't think that's a bad way to manage it, because if you did a two and a half override, you know, saying, you know, gosh, we need eighty thousand dollars for capital every year, let's just do a two and a half override. After about the third year, you'd be saying, well, now I need a debt exclusion. Because you take that other eighty thousand to fund the, you know, to fund the schools and the police and that sort of.
How much appetite do you think, in response to comment made here in public tonight by Eric, there would be for a two and a half override for the schools? Arguably, if they're gonna go up a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars relative to last year, would that ever qualify for enough interest on the part of the town and say, this is finally time to get forward and say, let's have a two and a half override? Because we as a town have been trying to do so much with kind of very, very modest resources, and it's clear that we just cannot keep going this way. I keep hearing everybody talk about an unsupportable system, although we keep supporting it year after year. But we're always in these tangles of trying to kind of figure out how you're gonna fund this stuff. Would that ever appeal, do you think, to the town, a two and a half override? Everybody says it's impossible, this is not the year. That's been going on for many years.
But we don't know what the school budget increase is gonna look like for next year.
Alright.
Well, I.
But it's a step change to your tax base that would allow you thereby absorb a bit more from, from this point forward. Although you're right, in four or five years, you could be right back at the same issue, saying, no, it's time for another tax increase. And I don't know that the town wants to get on that escalator.
The town doesn't have a real good explanation for your two and a half overrides. I can't. I can't remember the last.
But that could be a function of several things. Not the right issue, the amount, the way it's talked about, publicized, whether it's persuasively made. To hear it said tonight, the school parents are now thinking that there's a real sea change and this is, you know, kind of a, really, they're willing to pitch in on it and all the rest of it. You say, okay, so animated about this, go forward with it. I don't know.
Unfortunately, the parents, the part of the population of Ashville does not have students in this school system.
It's a declining percentage of our population base, I think.
You were here when this senior center was talking about the change from like four hundred and fifty to eight hundred.
Yeah, ten years.
I don't think that's the group that's putting kids in school. It's like, they're doing grandchildren.
That's a good, they're a grand, at large, on every catch.
Yeah. It, that's the other.
I, I think, I think these are all, you know, kind of huge issues. And I, and I oversimplify it. I mean, if we're thinking about a hundred thousand dollars extra, and I say it's fifty cents, then I take it back to my house. You know, that'd be about two hundred dollars a year. I'm still learning, I'm sure that I can, I can work an extra ten hours and we'll make up for it.
Mary's point was that group we're talking about that's gonna be sixty over is, in theory, the aging population that's going onto a fixed income, potentially.
Well, I always wonder on these projections, because if they were made in the same, by the same types of peoples and the same formula that said that school is gonna be full up there, I guess I would put a lot to that.
But that was crazy, that, that, that was, I mean, that was, that was a projection that we could disprove.
Wayne, you got something for it?
Yeah, I have. You brought up two very interesting points. And I appreciate them from all angles. I've always supported the schools. And I know that, and that there is a vast difference in who come over, how those statistics were formed. This is out of your, not out of the state, which the school came from, but out of the numbers that came from the street list. And they have done nothing but go up for three years.
The aging population.
The aging population percentage in the town of Ashville. We're not getting a lot of sales, people are not able to sell their homes. A lot of us would be unable to sell if we were forced into it financially. But now, what I can get from my house would, every dime, we have to go into approvals before it could be sold. Every single dime. Title five.
Brian, you have.
Let me. Subject, a hundred and twenty thousand, I'd be lucky to get a hundred and ten for the house.
Brian, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment quickly from the green community that we're, we've got an energy audit for the firehouse that says, recommend spending twenty-seven thousand dollars on energy improvements to that, that would cut the heating bill in half. And that's a, that brings up the question of longevity of the building. Is that the right place to be investing that amount of money? Something that we may wanna broaden our decision, scope of decisions.
I really think at some point what we need to do is get representatives from a lot of committees and departments and put the tables in kind of a round and, and say, let, let's talk about a few of these issues after maybe the select board has prioritized what, you know, what we need to be looking at. I mean, we got lots of issues and probably not a whole lot of structure on that.
There's, there's one issue that just came up, he just brought up. You can't get a fire truck to live in that. We're gonna eventually have to replace that big truck. It's, oh, it's, it's almost, it's outdated now. And yet it's still very useful, but it's just gonna have to be replaced. You can't hardly buy a truck that'll fit that firehouse. Is that the reality coming up? Ask anybody who's selling it.
Alright, so what's on the agenda tomorrow night?
I do have one thing, just, I have filed with the clerk a public disclosure, because tomorrow we're dealing with Park.
Yes.
And my wife is the chairman, I plan to participate, but, you know, I just wanted to let the world know, so.
It's done.
I won't bring it up tomorrow, just, maybe if it's a full house.
Did you have anything after the night? What, what, just clarify with me, what we have posted for the agenda tomorrow night is fire commission personnel board, technical school, uh.
We pretend to exclude on both nights in case we wanted to continue the conversation.
So, we probably need to fill in some of those general government things tomorrow night too?
We can start talking about them.
We can start. I mean, I don't think those are gonna have a big shift in the budget one way or the other.
Although, I guess I wanna say, one thing I would think in terms of looking at the budget, talking to all the, the people, if we, if, if there's a two and a half override, for example, I guess the question that comes to my mind is when everybody has been working so very hard to not increase everything, I wonder if that starts to undercut. I mean, there is a lot of pressure on people to not get what they feel they need to do the job. So, I just want to say that. And talking about general government is a place where that naturally comes up, but in, in a lot.
Well, we can, we can start filling in some of those holes tomorrow. I don't think it's gonna make a huge swing, and, and we have a general discussion on the agenda, right, that's posted. And what we, well, I, I'm thinking we need to have a good discussion on this police deal. I mean, that's something that we, it's not gonna be easy, but we need to get our arms wrapped around where that needs to be. Cause I, I gotta believe everybody knows that what he came in with is just.
Difficult to do.
Huh?
Difficult to do.
It could be a little beyond that for some of us.
So, what do you suggest?
Well, I think that's, I think we should be prepared to come in and, and have some ideas and talk. I just have open discussion, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure there's a right or wrong, but we've gotta, we've gotta get off the line.
So, why don't we, why don't we just have a general budget discussion of items that have been before us? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than just saying specifically the police, and if the police come up, then that's fine. You see what I'm saying?
That's fine, but I, that, that's what.
Would you reserve time for that, or would you?
I think we have time in there for.
After the special town meeting. After the special time meeting.
Right, the special time meeting, fire commission, personnel board, I think those are pretty quick.
Hopefully.
You know, although, although our history has been that it hasn't been.
Well, that's, that's what moves. Pretty quick.
So, all right. Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Home favorite, it's unanimous.